And at some point, Emily and Anna came to me through Susan Giro, who was the public health nurse here in the San Fernando Valley. And that's how we hooked up. And they told me what they had in mind. I think that Suzanne, the public health nurse, had told them about me. And they asked me if I would be willing to do something about falling. And I said, "Great, so..." I could write a book about this, but I'm not...
No time for a book.
Yeah, no time for a book. But they presented me with a ton of statistics and material. And from that, I was able to gather all the material I needed to write these skits on falling.
And the skits are very important because they do reflect real life and the accidents that befall seniors. Now, how many seniors' health is impacted by preventable falls? Is it a big number?
Oh, indeed. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention estimate that 1 in 3 older adults falls every year. So in L.A., that equates to over 150,000 older adults that fall every year.
Well, we'll be talking about ways to minimize those risks. And now let's take a look at Marilyn and her players passing on some important information in a most entertaining way.
What can I say? Sure, it was my fault. My friend was picking me up any minute. We were going to a party. But wouldn't you know it? The bulb in my hallway fixture had just burned out. Oh, it's dark in my front hallway without a light. Well, I was in a hurry. But I've changed bulbs before, so I grabbed my ladder and started climbing up. However, I forgot that I was wearing my new high-heeled shoes I don't usually wear. Well, there I was, almost at the top rung, when my heel caught on a step. And, oh, you guessed it, I went tumbling all the way down. Lying there on the floor, I remembered that you should always have a cellphone on you at all times, but especially when you're on a ladder. Well, too late now. It was getting darker. Oh darn, I forgot to turn on some lights in my living room. Ooh, and I was really hurting all over. My situation dawned on me. Okay, stay calm. I recall what you're supposed to do in case you fall. Take a deep breath. Try to roll over on your side. Relax. Then get up on your hands and knees and crawl to the nearest chair. Oh, right. My knees were turning to jello and my hands were swelling. And as I tried to straighten my legs, one leg became entangled with an extension cord, an extension cord from a table lamp. I panicked. What if there was a short in the outlet? What if that started a fire? What if I had major injuries? When the doorbell finally rang, I was able to crawl over to the door, reach up, grab the doorknob, and open the door. My friend Doris looked down at me and asked me why I had a lamp wrapped around my leg. Well, to tell you the truth, I was very lucky. Just a sprained ankle, two broken fingers, a fractured wrist, and a multicolored face. It could have been much worse. You know, I found out that 20 to 30% of people who fall experience some pretty serious injuries, well, like hip fractures and head traumas. That can increase the risk of an early death. Well, since I won't be driving for a while, I did a lot of very preventive maintenance around my house. Coiled up and secured extension cords to the wall. Installed light switches at the top and the bottom of my staircase. And, oh yes, put extra long-life bulbs in my fixtures. In the future, when I need to change a light bulb, instead of grabbing a ladder, I think I'll ask for help. I volunteer as an usher at a theater in Hollywood. It's a great way to see plays when you're on a limited budget. I sure enjoy doing it, but I won't be able to for quite a while. I can't believe such a small fall could have caused such a big problem. This is what happened. It had been raining all day. Now, everyone was happy about the rain because it came after a long, hot, dry spell. Well, that morning, I was running late, so I made a fast dash across the street to catch a bus into Hollywood. The soles of my shoes were slightly worn. I was going to the shoemaker the next day. I thought the road felt slippery under my feet because of the shoes. Wait a minute. I heard that roads are most slippery after a long, dry spill. With the first rain, the oil in the asphalt rises up. Whoops, too late. Next thing I know, I wake up in a hospital with a broken hip and a concussion. Me, of all people. I'm very active, big on vitamins, stick to a healthy diet. I have just a little osteoporosis. The doctors were asking me all these silly questions. How has my blood pressure been? What about medications? What about other falls? No, 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 pressure has always been normal. No meds. This is my first serious fall. Hopefully, my last fall ever. And later on, I remembered the allergy pill I take once in a while. I took it that morning. The bottle did say may cause drowsiness. The same for the cough medicine, but all I took was 2 teaspoons. Yes, I was a little woozy as I ran across the street. So I went from a nursing home to an assisted living place. I couldn't go home. I live alone and I was still in a wheelchair. Oh, I did graduate to a walker, but a lot of people don't know this. So I'll tell you. Many people who fall, even if they're not injured, develop a fear of falling. It can cause them to limit their activities, which can lead to a loss of independence, depression, isolation, and actually increase the risk of falling. That, my friends, is my problem. The hip has healed for the most part. However, I feel I can't walk without my walker. My doctor and physical therapist, they both say I can just use a cane. But I'm afraid. So I joined a balance class to build up my confidence. Heck, I made up my mind. I'll tell you, I'm pretty tough. So tomorrow, I'll see my physical therapist and I'll try to use just the cane. First around the house, then when I feel a little more confident, outdoors as well. A few hours at a time, a few days at a time. Then by golly, before you know it, I'll be back volunteering again. I hope that nice-looking older gentleman is still in our volunteer group.
Wasn't that a fun presentation? Well, it's not over. Please stay tuned for more of Aging Well in L.A.
Saving energy is simple. It even saves you money. Replace incandescent light bulbs with compact fluorescent bulbs. Set your thermostat to 78 degrees or higher in the summer. Weather seal your home. When replacing old appliances, select Energy Star qualified appliances that are up to 40% more efficient. And unplug electronic devices when not in use. Visit ladwp.com for more energy-saving tips and information. Save energy, save money.
You know, I am getting better. I can still take care of myself. You just don't know.
Now that moms moved in, life has become a bit more complicated for all of us. We knew there would be challenges, but overall, we're glad to be together.
I don't like to call him in the office when I have to go to the doctor to make sure I want to go out.
We're so thankful for the help we received.
Well, as you can see, I'm in pretty good shape for a man my age. At least I was until it happened. I walked every morning, at least a mile, sometimes two. Worked out at the gym. Even did yoga. Then it happened. I was taking my usual walk in the neighborhood. Now, I want to tell you, all of us neighbors have been very concerned about the uprooting of the sidewalks due to these big, old trees. Well, anyway, I was out on a lovely summer day, walking along with my dog, when suddenly the sidewalk and I met face to face. There I am, flat on my kisser, and I can't move. I went into an "if only" mode. If only I'd picked up my prescription sunglasses. If only I had left the dog at home. You see, my boxer doesn't much care for other dogs. And when he saw that pug heading straight toward us, he really jerked the leash. Yeah, yeah, I know. You're supposed to keep two hands on the leash at all times. One on the loop of the handle, the other lower down. Yeah, yeah, I know all that. But what good is knowing if you don't do it? Meanwhile, I'm bleeding like crazy. I don't know who was whining the loudest, me or the dog. Someone called 911, and I wound up in the hospital. I felt like I was wrapped head to toe, like a mummy. Deep cut on my scalp, fractures on my face, both my arms and my kneecap. Years ago, when I tripped on a sprinkler head in my yard, I vowed I would be more cautious. Then it was just a sprained ankle. Now it's a whole different ballgame. After the hospital, a convalescent facility, and I needed 24/7 caregiver at home. So I had plenty of physical therapy, too, still do. But the sad thing is, I just can't do the things I used to do and enjoy. It's depressing. However, my doctor recommended water exercises and fitness programs to improve my balance and strengthen my lower body. So I'm here to tell you, I'm not going to sit around. Just as soon as I can, I'm starting those programs. You know, 35 to 40% of older Americans fall annually. Believe you me, I don't want to be one of those statistics ever again. As for my dog, well, he suffered from guilt for a long time. Moody, refused treats, paced the floor at night. But the dog trainer therapist I hired helped him to understand that accident was not his fault.
This is what happens when you try to be too nice to relatives. I'm talking about that stupid scattle rug my sister-in-law gave me for my bathroom when I moved into my new apartment. I never liked the color. I didn't want to hurt her feelings, so I kept it. Well, that day, as I stepped out of the tub and onto the rug, I slipped and went face down into all that purple fuzz. I remember that as I was falling, I tried to reach for the grab bars, but they weren't there. The handyman for the building was supposed to install them before I moved in. I never noticed they were missing. In all fairness, my sister-in-law did tell me to be sure to put a gripper pad under the rugs. All loose rugs should have gripper pads. So why didn't she buy one for me? As I lay there on the rug, fuzz in my mouth, instead of my light flashing before my eyes, my falls over the years flashed before my eyes. Like the time I tripped over my little tuawawa. She now wears a bell around her neck. Oh, and that party where I missed a step, clutched at the bookshelf, and all the books went flying all over the room. How embarrassing was that? Then there was a time I forgot to pick the magazines up off the floor. And I... Oh, well, who can remember that? Well, after a while, even though I was dizzy, I was able to call a friend who took me to the emergency room. It's a good thing I have a good sense of humor. The doctor asked me, "What is that purple fuzz on your face?" I said, "You're the doctor, you tell me." Well, I broke my hip, and I was in a rehab facility for a long time. As you know, Medicare does not cover everything. In addition, I had to keep paying the rent for my apartment since I was planning on going back. I've recovered enough so I can take aerobics and Tai Chi classes at my senior center to work on my flexibility and balance. I'm being more careful these days with my surroundings and day-to-day chores. Probably the most important thing I've learned is that while older people fall more often and when they do, they suffer more serious injuries, falls are preventable and not the inevitable part of aging.
I haven't seen you in a long time. How are you doing?
Don't ask. You know those theaters with the stadium seating? The lighting on those steps is so bad. I missed a step and I fell head down. My whole head and neck were in one of those large contraptions cast for one year. Now I still have to wear a neck brace. So how's your family?
Don't ask. My brother tripped on one of those cement block barriers in a parking lot, broke his toe and his arm. Well, he was devastated. He planned on running in the marathon. By the way, how is your sister?
Don't ask. She adopted a puppy. It takes a long time to housebreak them. Anyway, she didn't see a puddle on the floor, fell, and sprained her back. She still can't go back to work. It's rough in this economy and being a single mother. What can I tell you? How's your friend Sylvia doing?
Oh, don't ask. In a nursing home, she became disoriented from all the medications that she takes and fell. Well, thank goodness, her neighbor found her on the front lawn. Well, I hear she's getting better, though.
Unfortunately, that happens. I've read that the risk of falling increases with four or more medications, especially if you have a chronic disease like arthritis or diabetes.
Hey, have you heard from Linda?
Don't ask. You won't believe this. Picture it. She is in bed. She reaches over to turn off the lamp on the table, overreaches, and falls off the bed. She had taken a sleeping pill before going to bed. She wanted to get a good night's sleep because she had an early audition the next morning for a movie. So she just lays there and on the floor, and she falls asleep. The next morning, her cleaning lady comes in, finds her, and starts screaming. Linda looks up and says, "Why are you screaming? You woke me up." She was okay, a little sore, but okay.
Well, I bet she felt terrible about missing the audition.
Well, to tell you the truth, they really were looking for someone a little younger, someone like Betty White.
Now, wasn't that a wonderful presentation? Marilyn, congratulations.
Oh, thank you so much.
You wrote nearly all of this.
I wrote all of it, yes. I wrote the skits, I wrote everything. And at the very last one, I injected a little humor. Falling is not very funny, but there was a little humor with the "don't ask" that I wrote especially to lighten it a little bit.
Well, it's so amazing. All of us have fallen. From the moment we're learning to walk, there are those accidents. And I can remember, within my own family, watching what were humorous falls and then suddenly realizing, wait a second, this is an 85-year-old woman that just tumbled out of a chair. And you made such wonderful use of these statistics. Anna and Emily, the statistics are really involving flesh-and-blood people of certain years.
Right, it's true that we see falls can just cause a bruised ego or can cause some serious injuries like hip fractures and head traumas. And they can also cause a major reduction in quality of life, unfortunately. That's why so much of the work that we do is in an effort to raise awareness among older adults and their families and senior service and healthcare providers about the common fall risks and ways to reduce them.
Assembling these statistics, things like unsecured carpets, they are serious risk for seniors.
Yeah, there's a lot of different fall risks, both related individually to the person but also out in the environment as well. And so in talking with people about ways to reduce their falls, one way that I think of to help me remember all these different ways, and we consider it multifactorial. There's a lot of different factors that we have to consider. And so I use the four Es to help me. And so the first E is evaluation. So that's looking at the person, looking, have they fallen before? What kind of chronic conditions do they have that might predispose them or make them more likely to fall? So things that are related to the individual, evaluating them for their own individual fall risk. So that's the first E. The second E is exercise, or some people prefer to call it physical activity. And I think we all know the important benefits of exercising, but specifically for fall prevention, increasing your strength and flexibility and endurance can really address some fall risk factors for the individual. The third E is environment. So we look at things inside the home, such as throw rugs and stairs and lighting, but also out in the environment that all of us encounter. Things like those little cement blocks that...
In parking lots.
That help stop your car. And uneven sidewalks and poor lighting, we kind of encounter that everywhere. And so looking at the environment and being aware of how you interact with the environment. And then the last E is education. And that kind of takes everything into consideration. So looking at your own fall risks and learning about ways to reduce them and making decisions that help keep you safe, you and your family safe.
It makes such sense. All of us who have had little children in the house, we all know about making the house kids safe. You know, taping up sharp edges and then, you know, don't run with scissors. But senior protection is another component of this. And caregivers exercising due diligence can do, particularly in the environment, as you mentioned, there are a lot of things that can cause problems. Well, thank you all for joining us today. It's really been most pleasant. Well, I hope you took something positive away from this. There's a lot you can do for fall prevention. Thank you so much for joining us.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda, and we live in Silver Lake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, December 16th, 2011. We're here in the John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome those members of the public who are here today, especially a lot of family and friends who have joined us today for our last meeting of the calendar year for City Council. We are broadcast live as well on Channel 35 throughout the city's cable system and want to welcome our cable viewers throughout the city of L.A. There are four other ways you can follow along the City Council. Next, you can always log on and follow us via the Internet at lacity.org, and also through your telephone by calling Council Phone, which is a service of the city to listen in to council meetings and any of our committee meetings. That number is 213-621-CITY. And then finally, you can remotely testify from Van Nuys or San Pedro, if that's closer to where you live. We've opened up those council chambers so that you can give testimony or just listen to the meetings from those two places, save some time, avoid some traffic and pollution, and listen in from those two remote facilities. Our agendas are made available to the public 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special meetings. Those are available here in council chambers and online at lacity.org. For any items that we vote on, the supporting material and reports are also made available for the public for your convenience. Those are too available at lacity.org. We will have a two-week recess. Our council offices, of course, except for the holiday, will be open. So it will be business as usual for any constituent concerns, but the council as a body will not be meeting for the next two weeks. We will next come into session on the 3rd of January, 2012. In the meantime, I want to thank those council members who are here pursuant to council rules on time. Council members Zine, Wesson, Reyes, Labange, and Englander. Welcome back, Mr. Englander. Good to have you back in chambers. And we are awaiting the following council members. We do have excused appances, excuse me, from Councilmember Cardenas and Parks. That means we are awaiting Mr. Alacon, Wezar, Corretz, Kocorian, Ms. Perry, and Mr. Rosendahl to join us. When they do, we will begin the official part of the meeting. In the meantime, we have on Fridays special presentations, which are done. We have four today that are planned, and one, I think we will start with now? Councilmember Wesson, you ready? All right. And again, just on a personal note, thank you to so many friends and family and community members from the 13th Council District. This is my last council meeting, presiding as the council president, and appreciate the presence of so many of you here. And with that, we're going to turn it over to Councilmember Herb Wesson for some remarks.
Good morning, Mr. President and members. You threw a nice party this morning, Mr. President. Even though I didn't see you, I only saw your dad, so I don't know where you were hiding. But today's a special day. We'll have an opportunity, I think, to show our appreciation to a young man who has served the city of Los Angeles on this council for over 10 years. An individual who has been the president of this council for over six years. A friend of many of us, an individual that's known to be able to juggle 14 balls up in the air and rarely drop one. An individual who I have the highest respect for because he joined the military during a time of war. He had a strong desire to serve. Or either you're crazy, Mr. President, I don't know. But I know a lot of people would not do that. But we have a program set up for you today, and I'm sure other members, when they come, they're going to want to say a few things about you. I'm sure Councilmember Zine will because he takes advantage at any opportunity where there's a microphone, don't you, Mr. Zine? Yeah, you do. Anyway, at this point, I'd like to bring up a woman that's no stranger to City Hall, somebody that I consider a very strong partner as we've been going through these very difficult times. An individual who is a great leader of men and women, an individual who has used common sense and her ability to influence people, to bring together a coalition of unions to work with us to help get the city through these very difficult economic times. Ladies and gentlemen, Cheryl Perisi of Ask Me. Cheryl, where are you?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Council President. How are you?
Good, thank you.
You know, the financial crisis of the last few years has affected our country in profound ways, creating the contradictions of greater demand for services and less resources to provide them. In the face of that, some have elected to turn on each other. And we all know the examples. We know Governor Walker in Wisconsin, Governor Kasich in Ohio, stepping away from a process of dialogue, stripping away collective bargaining rights in the face and in favor of unilateralism. Even in California, many prominent cities have taken the low road of scapegoating their workforce for the problems created by this economic crisis. Our story in Los Angeles is a different one, where together, from the outset, labor and management have stayed engaged. And Eric, that happened in no small part because of your leadership. You understood that in times of crisis, we need to not turn on each other, but to turn toward each other, to continue to engage and challenge each other, to identify problems and work toward creative, albeit difficult, solutions. And your commitment to ongoing engagement with labor has been unwavering. And the examples of it are numerous. I mean, whether it was over coffee in your office or phone calls late at night from distant places when you were on military service and had to figure out, you know, the few minutes of downtime that you would have to be able to engage with those of us who are here still in Los Angeles at bargaining tables, trying to figure out these problems. During our late-night e-RIP negotiations, which went all night, and the labor team, you know, showed up in your office with tents and sleeping bags, and you shared leftover food with us and told us, "Stay as long as you like." Our outcomes were not perfect. Our city still suffers from the losses of childcare workers, librarians, and animal service workers. These casualties in our communities still challenge us to do better. Our work is not done, but we are better, better for the engagement that you fostered. And a changing role is not a changed commitment. And we look forward, in our ongoing relationship, to know that the bond that you have formed with labor and with the working families of the city of Los Angeles will remain, and that we will continue to work together to forge solutions and move our great city forward. So on behalf of the Coalition of L.A. City Unions and our thousands of members, I want to congratulate you for an outstanding term as council president and just say that, obviously, we look forward to the work of our ongoing relationship. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cheryl.
Let's give Cheryl another round of applause. Next, I want to bring up the president of the Los Angeles Business Council. We all know her, Mary Leslie. She runs one of the most influential advocacy organizations in the southern part of this state. She's very hardworking. In fact, we were just together, I want to say, about a month ago. Ms. Perry was there, Mr. Garcetti was there, Ms. Grue was there, I was there. We had a big conference at UCLA, and I received an award. And I like receiving awards, so I'll come back next year when you have it. But anyway, she's a friend of the city, a friend of business, friend of the nonprofits, friend of those in need. Ladies and gentlemen, Mary Leslie, president.
Thank you so much for that. This is a tough thing to do, in a few minutes, pay tribute to Eric Garcetti after six years and many more of his service to the city of Los Angeles. But I'd like to start first by thanking you, Eric Garcetti, for choosing public service as your career, because we all know how attractive public service is sometimes, how lucrative it is, the big bonuses you're getting, the constant fawning and praise you receive, and of course, the glamour and glitz of Camelot. So, not to mention the unenviable task of having to make hard decisions. Few talented leaders go into public service eager to cut essential services. These have been tough times, and Eric, you have stepped up to the plate time and time again to solve the extraordinarily difficult issues facing the city of L.A. Throughout the years, you have always made quality of life in communities anchors to your unique brand of leadership. Whether it was the vision and tenacity you demonstrated on Prop O to clean our water, the housing and infrastructure bonds to create workforce housing, your jobs and transit, the creation of Affordable Housing Trust Fund, your championing Prop R, or working with us incredibly hard to protect our library systems. Council presidents and local leaders from across the country have watched you, envying and admiring what you have done here, as you have created a case study in proving that a progressive activist agenda can be successfully coupled with no-nonsense pragmatism to get things done. There were numerous issues on which many people disagreed with you, but Eric, true to your leadership style, you worked to convince even the staunchest of skeptics. You helped labor and business find common ground through pension reform. You worked with the LABC, and will continue, I hope, to create jobs through a robust, clean L.A. solar program to harness our city's abundance, sunshine, and our solar workforce in the waiting. We have always taken pride in knowing that L.A. had a council president, second to none, in finding substantive solutions and common ground to tough problems. As a tribute to you this morning, I would like to read a holiday prayer of peace that I think embraces some of the highest virtues of public service. It's by a fellow Italian who was the son of a wealthy merchant, who, much to the surprise of his family and friends, decided to start a religious order, forsaking material wealth and relying on the support of others. The Peace Prayer of St. Francis. "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me so love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life." Now, of course, we don't really know a lot about eternal life. However, assuredly, we know about you. Eric, in this life and in this city, you have been one of the true peacemakers, and we thank you for that and look forward to many years of your leadership to come. Thank you.
Well said, Mary, well said. Now, I love stories like the next young lady's life. Raised in South Central L.A., determined to make her community a better community. Volunteered for an organization, went from volunteer of this organization to the executive director of this organization that spends every waking moment trying to make the lives better of those who find themselves in unfortunate situations. Ladies and gentlemen, the executive director of El Centro del Pueblo, Sandra Figueroa. Give her a round of applause.
Hi, Eric. Good morning, President Garcetti, President-elect Herb Wesson, and members of the City Council. My name is Sandra Figueroa Villa, and I am the executive director of El Centro del Pueblo. And I was really honored that I was asked to do this, Eric, because I think that having worked with families for over 40 years, and we've had great council members, I see Jackie Goldberg here, and you had some really large shoes to follow. I'm here today to thank you, and I want to thank you for keeping your promise to represent and bring access to city services to the most vulnerable marginalized working poor populations in this city. As I reflected on your accomplishments and your record, I was looking at all these different things that you were doing, and I'm glad the speakers before me brought it up because I couldn't... Two minutes, they said. So I chose to talk- So, I chose to talk about what stands out most to me, and those, those are the things that directly affect our families in the Latino community. That's been my life. The after-school program at the Park After Dark started in Glassell Park and now serves hundreds of kids. Your partnership with the LAUSD to bring kids back home and off the bus in our neighborhoods. Your English and Spanish government classes to teach Latino families how to access city government was really important to us. Your constant support of the Dream Act, allowing the use of matriculas consulares in support of Special Order 40 was really important to my Central American friends. Reducing graffiti by 80% with the Untag Program, stopping evictions of tenants of foreclosed properties, and convincing small banks to reduce principles, and then primarily in the Echo Park community, that was huge. And then your constant support of the Family Source Work Source and Gang Reduction Intervention Programs, and I see many of our peer lead agencies and nonprofits represented today. I can go on and on, but I'm here, the point I want to make to you, Eric, is that you are truly appreciated, we value you, and we love you. We're looking forward to continue working with you, and I will personally, personally support you in any way possible. I know you're, you're just starting out, you know, you're, you're flying again out of council, and you have my support.
Mr. President, do you like surprises?
All right.
Everybody here that likes surprises, raise their hand. We like surprises. But before I bring up a surprise guest, I've got to share with you a story as to how I personally had an opportunity to meet this guest. I was serving in the California State Assembly as Speaker of the Assembly with Ms. Goldberg, who I think is down at the end. And we had a visit from China. You ever watch the TV series Kung Fu? We had Shaolin monks. And they came in and they did a demonstration before the Assembly. They were kind of on a tour. I learned a very valuable lesson that day: Never sit in the front row. Because they grabbed me, they wanted me to participate in a karate drill. So this monk, who was shorter than me, thinner than I am, stands in front of me, crosses his arms, and says, "Kick me." I kicked him. As hard as I got, I kicked him. All of these cameras went off, and next thing I know, I was giving interviews on Australian radio and Japanese radio. But there was one person who's kind of sick and twisted like me, who thought that it was hilarious, and gave me television time on a late-night show. Ladies and gentlemen, a man who needs no introduction, Jimmy Kimmel. One of the funniest men in Hollywood.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wesson, that's out of order.
Well, this, this is embarrassing, because I honestly, I just came here because my power still isn't on. No, I came here actually to, to honor our friend Eric, who, as you know, is being deported? Is that what's happening here? I met Eric, I don't know, probably about five or six years ago, maybe a little bit longer than that. He's, he's been very supportive of our, our show here in Hollywood, our San Gennaro Foundation. We, we do a big event in Hollywood to raise money for local charities every year, and Eric allegedly is Italian, so he's supportive of that. Eric was very helpful when we put a mural on Hollywood High School of John Ritter to honor him after he passed away, and a donation was made by the W Hotel of half a million dollars. And I honestly was impressed by, not just Eric, but a lot of people in this room, and how everyone came together. But it, it was remarkable to me, who, I came into this situation expecting nothing, really, expecting a bunch of people who weren't really here to help, who are here to make posters on people's lawns. And I really, I'm impressed by the spirit of helpfulness and community that I've, I've personally experienced, and I think Eric is a big part of that. I mean, it really impressed me that everyone seems to like this guy, and it's easy to understand why everyone likes him, because he's a, he cares, he's a wonderful piano player, he is a very tender lover. Was I not supposed to mention that? Eric, I'll give you one story about Eric. We had a, as you probably know, we had a problem in Hollywood. Some of the costume characters, some of the superheroes who work outside our theater were, I don't know, stabbing people or something. And there are a lot of, a lot of good people dressed up in those outfits, and a lot of not-so-good people dressed in those outfits. So on behalf of the, the good ones, I wrote a letter to Eric, asking him to consider that and to keep that in mind. And you know what Eric did? Eric actually went undercover, dressed as Wonder Woman, every night, for three weeks to get to the bottom of this. And you know what? He did get to the bottom of it. And Eric, we wish you the best. I think you'd be a great mayor for whatever I know, and congratulations.
Jimmy Kimmel, ladies and gentlemen. You know what? Mr. President, I'm going to take a moment, and that will probably drive your staff crazy, because I'm going to reverse the order of something that's supposed to take place. At this juncture, it would have been my pleasure to ask you to say a few words, but I have to believe that there are other members on this council that would like to express their appreciation. So I'm going to pull my rank as the newbie president and allow our colleagues to speak. So you have the cue, you know who's in it, let's rock.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. Wesson. Eric, your mom and dad, your wife here with those great smiles, and the accomplishments that you've made. There he is, Amy's up there with you. Eric and I got elected at the same time, and I remember those campaigns 10 years ago. And I remember how Eric's leadership was displayed here in the city council. I remember the days on the EERC, the many early mornings we had at Executive Party Relations Committee discussing issues that Sheryl Perici talked about with the unions, the employees of the city, and Eric's continuing concern of compassion for the workers, and to make sure we did the right thing for the workers and the people of Los Angeles to balance it all. I remember Eric joining United States Navy as a second lieutenant to show his concern for our country patriotism, and what he's done as not only the council member, the council president, but as a member of the United States Navy. And when he asked to go on a mission, how he rushes down, jumps on the ship, and then comes back to do his services here for the people of Los Angeles, juggling not only his commitment here, but the commitment for the military and the commitment for his lovely wife, Amy. I remember the wedding up in Santa Barbara. I remember all the wonderful activities that have taken place. And Eric can testify to my frugality as we were traveling, and I said, "Why should we get separate rooms when we can save the money for the city?" And we, we shared the same room, Eric, I remember that.
Jimmy Kimmel already covered that.
Jimmy, Jimmy Kimmel. You're not tender. Through the hard times, through the good times, through all the times, Eric has been there for six years, leading this council and helping the city to remain a vibrant city with all the troubles, and making me the assistant pro tem. Jan Perry was the pro tem, I was assistant pro tem, we called it council leadership, where we would conduct the meetings and maintain order and discipline. And we always talked about Mr. Alakon, Mr. Alakon, the famous word, "You're out of order, you're out of order." But the whole, the whole issue, when we look back at 10 years, and we look at your term as, as the president, and how we've been able to survive, how we've gone through these troublesome times, these troublesome waters for our employees, the furlough program, the issue about public safety, and continuously, the challenges that have come before us and the challenges that you have guided us through continuously over the last six years. And I know that when I go to Hollywood, it's a new Hollywood. When I go down Hollywood Boulevard, it's a new Hollywood Boulevard, where we used to have for lease, for sale, we now have vibrant entertainment. We now have a part of this city that has turned itself around, and it was under your leadership that that took place, and you need to be very proud for that. I remember when Jimmy Kimmel first came to town, and we were going to block off Hollywood Boulevard, because they had the Jimmy Kimmel Show and all the fans that turned out. 10 years later, Jimmy Kimmel's still here, and what you have done for Hollywood Boulevard. And when you travel down Highland, and you see that Hollywood Boulevard is blocked off, it's because Eric Garcetti has turned the area around of Hollywood, so we have a vibrant Hollywood, a vibrant economy. So Eric, I know we're going to continue together. I wish you well. It's been a pleasure, it's been an honor, serving with you, along with our other colleagues, and to your mom and dad. And Gil, I remember you as the district attorney of L.A. County, and I remember all the good work you did, and I remember us at events when Eric was just a little kid, and you and I were taking photos, and now you're an accomplished photographer, and the wonderful family that, that you have. And they say that your son, the council president, who remains in the run for the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, what a tribute to you, the mom and dad, who brought this wonderful person around. If you look on his desk, he hasn't forgotten his roots, because he has his grand, picture of his grandfather there on his desk here in the council chamber. So, a lot of heart, a lot of soul, a lot of compassion, a good friend. Eric, I wish you well, and to all the folks that are here today, wishing you well in the future, future endeavors, as we continue down that path for the people of Los Angeles. God bless you, my good friend, and to Gil, lovely wife, lovely mom, to all of you. Thank you on behalf of the people of Los Angeles for showing your love and support for my good friend Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. And I appreciate the good words. Feel free to, to keep it short, guys, I'm, I'm cool with that too, Mr.
Well, Eric, I just want to commend you on a terrific two and a half years that I've watched you as president, and the incredible amount of dedication and energy that you've brought to this job, as well as a great amount of passion. I think the toughest thing you've had to deal with while I was here is a little economic downturn. You've helped bring fiscal responsibility to our city council and our city, and helped us get through this, and you did it without doing it on the backs of our workers, which I certainly appreciate, and I know all our, our employees do as well. I'm proud of you on your policy leadership on a number of issues. The one I personally appreciate the most is your leadership on gun violence issues, particularly your, your work on helping us try to fight open carry, which we've had some success at, and I look forward to continuing to work with you on, on those issues and many other important policy issues. It's been great working with you. I particularly appreciate it a couple of years ago, when I came onto the council, and your helping to provide me some guidance and showing me the ropes as, as the newbie on the city council, and I and my staff will always appreciate that. And welcome to this side of the horseshoe, we'll enjoy having you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts, appreciate it. Mr.
Well, first, I want to say thank you, Eric. Thank you for your friendship. It's a testimony to your influence, and all that is positive, with all the great people that are here in the audience. It's great to see the elected officials that are here, the, the former elected officials, but as well as all the parents and all the leaders who have struggled to essentially make a difference for our families and our children. Now, we started together, along with Dennis, and we are in the same class, so to speak. And there's a lot we've been through. I think it's 10 years now. I think we're combining grammar school and high school almost. But it is in that growth that you get to learn about people and the individual, the human side of the elected official. Each one of us, we represent almost 300,000 people in a city of almost 4 million, so 15 emerges. And those 15, each one of us has our own story, our own story of our own struggle, our sense of purpose. We know what our family's been through, and there are some real reasons why we were inspired to do this. And there are moments in this horseshoe where we make decisions, and you kind of wonder, okay, who's an ally and who isn't, who's a friend who isn't. But one former councilman left me a book and said, "In the council, there are no friends and enemies. There's one vote, and then there's the next vote." And the fact is, there've been moments where we have to decide about affordable housing. We have to decide how we impact workers. We have to make sure that the people with money are able to say, "I'm comfortable with that person. They want sustained growth, they want to be job-friendly," and there has to be a balancing point somewhere. And I've seen you, Eric, masterfully juggle these very sensitive issues. I've been able to see you, in your silence, make a statement, and your statements make profound impressions, and for that, I thank you. Now, as a youngster who comes from, who started here, I felt like a youngster. But coming from a neighborhood where I'm the son of a janitor, son of immigrants, the first to go to college, some of these environments can, can be pretty daunting, and to see you maneuver smoothly through these different social circles was something to behold. And I learned from that. I learned not to be so angry at times, and that perhaps having a softer voice, people will take you more seriously. But it's because of the emotion we feel and how we want to make change. So, as we go forward, I know that you'll be contin, you will continue to be that voice. The fact that we can have that sense of reassurance, that there are people like you who are able to get to these incredible heights. I mean, when I went to UCLA, I went as university BA, masters. I went with Eric to UCLA once, and he tells me, "Went there for grammar school." And that kind of blew me away. And then to have a Rhodes Scholar with us truly is something that speaks to your depth of knowledge of many of the different issues that are very complicated. And I started this with you all, because each one of us has a range of talents that we offer to this great city. Yes, it gets pretty brutal sometimes, when you hear public comment routinely calling us thieves, cowards, everything you can think of, and still be focused on what's good for our city, what's good for our communities. And now more than ever, we need, need that type of leadership. So, I thank you, Eric, for your friendship. I thank you for your leadership, but I also want to thank my colleagues for being able to come together in this very important time in our city's history, and understand that the next few months, this next race, is about the city. It's not about the individual, it's not about our own political careers, it's about what's best for our city, and we'll let the people decide. Thank you, Eric, thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Engler, and then Ms. Perry. Mr. Engler.
I have nothing nice to say at all.
I'm sorry, Mr. Engler seems to be missing.
Is my time up?
And he was replaced with a beard.
That's right, well, I'm trying to save water for the conservationists. I, I'm going to speak on a personal note about my friend Eric Garcetti. Rather than talk about all the wonderful things you've done politically in terms of policy, and all the things you've done to shape L.A., and the fact that, and I was thinking about this the other day, Solly was a great captain who landed a plane on the Hudson. When he took off, when those 155 passengers took off that day, they were just hoping to make it home to see their loved ones. to make it home to see their loved ones. They were just hoping to make it home safely and didn't really give it another thought. They got on the plane and took off their shoes and put on their headphones and turned on their music and their movies, and then all hell broke loose. That's what happened to the city of Los Angeles when you took office. We were in great shape. We weren't the Titanic, and we didn't sink, but we were in great shape and things were moving forward, and you had a lot of great ideas and wanted to really improve the climate here in Los Angeles and make it a better life for everyone. And the engines went out, and you landed the plane on the Hudson. You saved the city. It's remarkable, and I don't think a lot of people really give you the credit as the leader of the council, as the council president, the only council president that I've known in my four months on the city council. So that's going to be strange to have a new president for me. Before that, though, I was a staff member. And I will tell you, as a staff member who's never worked in the building, I came in to this building as a chief of staff. That was my first job. And that's a scary, scary role to come in with no experience, never having worked for any elected officials at all, and knowing you're coming in as a chief deputy. And a lot of the council members, I won't say all of them, but not all of them were so embracing, let's say that. Not all of them really took the time out of their day, since I didn't work for them, to say, "Hey, you're coming in as a chief of staff. If you ever need advice, if you ever want to sit down, call me." And I did. I called Eric because he was the only one who'd said it many, many times, often. Anytime I saw him, "How are things going? Can we talk about it? Can I give you any guidance? Can I support you in any way?" As a staff member. And it's very intimidating to come into this building as a staff member, as a new staff member, as a member of the public, and try to approach a council member. And to do that, you know, he really took the time to be personal and ethical and honest. And there are few people I think you ever come across in life, particularly in politics, particularly in the city, that when they give you their word, you can actually take it to the bank. The only promise that Eric has not stood up to, to me so far, was that he promised to give me a photo of him in his Navy uniform for my wallet, and I haven't gotten that yet. Hopefully, I'll get that soon. But I wanted to say thank you for being a great friend, a great mentor, a great leader. You're an incredibly talented individual, that the memories that we've shared, whether it's working on the roast together, whether it's being a staff member and working with another council member now being colleagues. And I look forward to working with you for many, many years in many different capacities and roles. I didn't know that Jimmy Kimmel was your number-one fan, so now I'm really, really impressed. But just want to say God bless you for everything you've done.
Thank you so much, Mitch. Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I want to say publicly what a pleasure it was to be a president pro tempore, with you as president, and Dennis on our team. Lot of interesting memories, and even though we are competitors in another race, I couldn't imagine having a more decent person to compete with. Many times, I also felt that we were mother and father to Dennis, and that we had a child we never expected to have, and that he presented many challenges for us, but that we raised him very well with good parenting and a sustained focus and discipline. And he has grown to be much more diplomatic, and much more articulate, and much more grounded in policymaking and doing his homework. And so I can say with a great deal of pride, as the mother to your father, that we've done a good job with our child. And I think that he will go on and accomplish. And that he will go on to achieve great things, as I expect we all will do the same. So thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. You know, you can work really hard, and kids will just turn out the way they're going to turn out, you know? No matter what you do. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I've been involved in public service in a lot of different capacities over the years, in education, in community organizing, in the state legislature, and now here. And in the work that I've done, I don't believe I've ever seen a more difficult challenge of leadership, a more difficult job than serving as the president of this entity, and particularly in times like these. And I think much has been said about the policy achievements, the extraordinary record of achievement that you've realized, Eric, over the years. But it's especially remarkable, given the challenge of leadership that you have in this body at that time. And I think as much as we all can check off the list of the accomplishments that you've had, I think one thing that doesn't appear on any list, but is probably more important than anything, is the way that you have allowed this city to feel as one, and brought this city together in so many different ways. In times of great strain and distress that we've been going through, I think your leadership has been irreplaceable in making this city feel the unity that it does right now. And in the most diverse city in America, probably in the world, that's no easy task. I think you've made it easier by claiming membership in every group in Los Angeles. I go to Armenian events, and people assume you speak more Armenian than I do. You might. I don't know. But I think more broadly, in public service, we have, many people in public service have a tendency to focus on minutia, whereas you have always been able to articulate a vision. I think many people in public service have focused more on personal power, and you have always focused on the empowerment of others, and especially those who lack a voice in this city. Where many people in public service allow themselves to be immersed in pettiness and division, you have always been a consensus builder and a peacemaker who has led this body with grace, with talent, and with a positive outlook that I think has been infectious both within this room and throughout our city. And for that, I think we are all indebted to you. I'm very proud to have been able to serve unto you, and I'm even prouder to call you my friend.
Thank you so much, Paul. I appreciate that. The man from CD4, Tom Labonge.
Mr. President, we were outside. There was a wonderful party in the rotunda. We were going to have a speaking program, but we let the party go thanks to your great staff. Gary Tobin wants to say a few words.
Thank you, Tom. I've got a couple of cohorts here, Anthony Thomas and Beverly Kenworthy. My name is Gary Tobin with the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce. Mr. President, thank you for your leadership the last six years. Thank you for the open-door policy that you've always had for business. Thank you for your support for the Office of Economic Analysis. Thank you for business tax reform. Thank you for your support for Home for Good, our effort with United Way to end chronic and veteran homelessness in the city of Los Angeles. We appreciate your leadership. On behalf of the three of us and our membership, we want to just say we've always appreciated working with you and have appreciated your staff very much. I want to make sure I don't miss any of those. We want to shout out for Sarah Dusso and Marcel Porras for their work on the Office of Economic Analysis, and their work on VTAC, and to Guy Lepa and Sally Castro for their work on our annual Access City Hall event. My first meeting with President Garcetti, I'd been here just a week or two, and we were talking about the term limits reform for the L.A. City Council, that the L.A. Chamber of Commerce, and the League of Women Voters sponsored in 2006. And because of that, several of you are still sitting in your seats today. Eric did a yeoman's job of raising money for that campaign, and we were successful. Thank you. We look forward to working with you because we know you're not leaving. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. And I want the clerk to run my time, three minutes. There's angels in the city of angels, and there's a special angel who comes from Mr. Reyes's district, but Mr. Garcetti has been a big champion for him. Raul Malcias, Raul, come up here.
Amigo Garcetti, let me say thank you in the name of the more than 2,000 kids you helped together with the councilman Reyes. It was like 10 years. I do remember when we had the very poor park city, and now you guys make the difference. Thank you very much in the name of the kids.
Thank you very much.
I want to say thank you for support, our kids, and all the kids. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti, de parte de toda la niñez y la juventud del área de Plaza Park, Eagle Rock, queremos dar las gracias por todo el apoyo que nos ha dado a nuestra organización y seguimos creciendo un poco más y ayudando a estos jóvenes. Gracias.
Muchas gracias por su ayuda también.
And Eric, this beautiful plaque talks about over 2,000 kids. Did you help the soccer program, the youth program, all your commitment that you do well? You're a special angel for this group. Give them a big hand. Thank you.
Muchisimas gracias a Noah.
And lastly, from the Thai community, Chansey. Chansey is here, and she's so special because you make Thai town special. Chansey Vattharrel.
Thank you. Hi, Eric. Hi, Amy. Hello, the Garcettis. Thank you so much. I want to take this opportunity to congratulate you on the work well done, and just express my appreciation for the leadership you've shown through the years. And I wanted to also today present you with our book, Ties in Los Angeles, as a gift. I was waiting for the special occasion, and this is the special occasion to present this to you. And I want to read you the dedication in the book that I've made. I just want to say thank you so much for your support of Thai CDC and the Thai community over the years. You've been a staunch advocate for human rights, immigrant and workers' rights, as well as for a more just and equitable city. So we will miss your leadership as council president, but look forward to partnering with you in your new future capacity as, quote-unquote, mayor, perhaps, where you'll make our city as vibrant and culturally enriching as CD13. So si se puede. Thank you so much, Eric.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tiger King says hello from Pava. He had to get back to work from a community group. Everybody in Hollywood loves you. And your district, Eric, you've made a wonderful impact on my life because you took advantage of an opportunity to help people. To help people is the greatest role in government, and that's what it's all about. And not only that, you extended yourself, as Mr. Weston so eloquently said, to the United States Navy. In a time of war, you joined the United States Reserves, and I thank you for that. I love you. I love your parents, your family, your beautiful wife, Amy. All of that is so important, but the heart that you have extends to others, your staff that have made a difference. God bless Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, Tom. It's Tom's world. We just live in it. It's a beautiful thing. Mr. Weezer.
And it's always difficult to go after Tom, that's for sure. We love you, too, Tom. But I'm just also very honored to Karik, my friend, and to have known him for some time now. He and I started off when he ran for council, and I ran for the school board, and we overlapped in some areas in central Los Angeles. And Eric, at that time, given the difficulties with the school district and their problems building schools, despite L.A. sitting at having jurisdiction, he went in there along with the staff and helped us move some very difficult projects at the time. And he loaned his support. He was at community meetings. And to me at that time, it showed that he was not someone who, an elected official who would govern from the ivory towers, but someone who would go into communities and get their hand dirty and work with the people to get things done. And you've shown that, Eric. I think when we think of a statesman, we think of an older person that's been in elective office for many, many years. And you're a young guy, so you don't fit that profile. But certainly, Eric, you are a statesman in the way you've conducted yourself as president. You're fair. You work well and play well with others, and you've always had in mind that no matter what we end up doing here, the politics that are done and the maneuvers that are made, at the end of the day, we wanted to get the best public policy out of these chambers. And you've always kept that in mind. So thank you, Eric, for that. And I share the same sentiment as my colleague, Mr. Krikorian. We all know about Eric's Jewish background, Latino background, Italian background. We could go on and on. But every time I've been with Eric in every part of this city, he somehow has some relationship to that area. We were in the valley, and you explained how you spent some time there as a youth in Bow Heights. And thank you, by the way, for going out every year to our memorial service for our veterans in Bow Heights. But he also had that relationship, not only ethnically, but geographically in the city. He could make that claim. But Eric, it's been a true pleasure to work with you. We're not saying goodbye. You're my new neighbor here. Welcome. I'm not that loud. You don't have to have a nuisance abatement on me. I'll probably think of doing that on you if you're too loud. But I look forward to continuing serving with you, and you've just been a wonderful, wonderful president these past six years. You've done a great job, and thank you for your service to these chambers and to the whole city of Los Angeles, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you so much, Eric.
Thank you, Jose. Appreciate it so much. Mr. Rosenthal, you got to take it home.
First of all, thank you, Sukie and Gil, for bringing him into the world, giving him the energy, the support, and the love that allowed him to grow to the dimensions he is today. It was your background, your love, your support that put him up there. So God bless you, and thank you both very much. And Amy, I just saw you kiss him. And I want to say it's a great thing to see that he's married, that he's strong in that marriage, that you guys are doing great things for humanity on the side as family, which I'm most appreciative of, to see that kind of action. It's not talk, it's action that you have been doing with young people and trying to bring them along. God bless you both for that. Eric, I wrote down a few words. First time I met you, you had a sweater on. I was doing a debate at Occidental, and he came over there to say hi, and we talked about you, Gil, and your campaign. I knew, not only was he a big supporter, but he was talking to the talk show host about various good things about you. And that was the first time I met him. I said, "Well, who is he?" And he's your son, and he's a professor there. So golly, you're already a teacher when I met you the very first time. One of the words everybody says is you're inspirational. You can walk in a room, and you find a way to connect to everybody there. You give them hope. You give them love. You give them a message of a positive note. I think your youth brings the young people into a very positive, hopeful spirit. And the seniors, they know you because you've always been respectful and engaged with seniors. So I'm not telling you how to run your campaign, but that kind of combination is breathtaking and is what this nation needs more of. You're articulate. I mean, I have seen you say things this way and that way and the other. That is incredible. Very few people can do that. And you can speak Spanish like rolling it off your tongue. And that's amazing to be able to communicate that way. You know, you connect the dots all over the world. When you and I have some private time, we talk. You've been around the world. I've been to 52 countries, and I could frankly feel that when you do things here, they're connected to everything else on the planet because we are one world, one people on the planet. And that kind of inspirational leadership helps heal the world, and especially now where we're in a negative kind of spot. You're supportive of gay rights. Now, I'm the first openly elected gay, but Jackie Goldberg is there. She's my sister. She was a trailblazer. Thank you, Jackie. But there was an interim. There was no Jackie Goldberg or Joel Wax. And so, you know, like, we all like to represent our groups, like Paul Krikorian has brought in the Armenians into full flavor here, or Mr. Coretts, the Jewish community always bringing it up and making issues, or the Latinos with Weezer and everybody else. There is that connection. But you stood up, and it's not that pleasant, to get up and support my basic human and civil rights. So I want to thank you for carrying the torch and then always standing close as we go forward with those issues of dis- forward with those issues of discrimination of human rights for gays and lesbians. We love you for that. Education. Wow. Well, you're very educated. This Rhodes Scholar line, there's another guy named Billy Clinton. Wasn't he a Rhodes Scholar or something like that? But that gives you a breadth and the sensibilities that go far beyond the moment. And I'm looking forward to watching your career rise to the top. Man, I'd like to see you in the Senate. That'd be nice and it'd be great for the nation and the world. Well, in concluding, I want to say it's been an honor and a privilege and a pleasure to serve with you as one of your colleagues. God bless you. Thank you.
Amy's very excited.
Again, Mr. President, as I feebly attempt to retain control.
Welcome to the new job.
I quit. You know what, Eric? I do want to say that, you know, you hear Jose and others talk about your heritage, Italian heritage, heritage, Jewish heritage, Spanish heritage, but what a lot of you don't know, especially if you're African-American, whenever you shake Eric Garcetti's hand, you feel a little prick because what he's doing is taking DNA tests to see if he can't connect himself officially to the African-American community. In order for him to support me when I ran for council, I had to submit to that test. But I do think we should take a moment to recognize former councilperson Jackie Goldberg. Jackie, stand up and wave. And if the Garcetti family would please stand, please stand and let us acknowledge your presence here today. And to all of the people that are here in these gorgeous chambers, I'm going to ask a personal favor. I want you to give, so that I can go home and sleep in my bed, my wife Fabian Wesson, a round of applause. The last time I forgot to introduce her, it cost me diamond earrings, okay? And during these tough economic times, I just can't go there now. Eric, everybody said everything, but I do want to say this. Jackie knows about it. All of the members here know about it. I know about it. The toughest thing in government is when there is a transition of leadership. I was so proud that when I was in the Assembly, Bob Hertzberg passed the baton to me without a... Jackie can tell you, there was no angst on behalf of the other members. The same thing happened with Fabian Nunez and I when he became Speaker. And because of you, the same thing has happened here. Ladies and gentlemen, give our president a round of applause. You're on, Mr. President. It's your time. You're on.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you. Thank you. And wow, it's like being at your own funeral, but you're alive. And really, I'm not going anywhere. I'm just moving down here and I'm looking forward, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Englander, to being your neighbor. I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the city. But let me start with some thank yous. Herb, thank you for emceeing this and thank you for the kind words and for this incredible transition as well. I know you're going to be an extraordinary president. You have the social intelligence to move this body. We all at times have difficult moments and all of us that care so deeply about this place and this institution know that leadership is not defined by what you tell people to do. It's defined by what you can lead people to do. And I know you're going to do an extraordinary job, Ed Reyes, as well as our new Pro Tem. You're going to do an amazing, amazing job as somebody who has come from the neighborhoods and understands this city as deeply as anybody in this room and never stop feeling that. Feel it deeply, sing it loudly and continue to lead. And Mr. Labons, who may be up in the chair here a lot, we finally have an emcee for Los Angeles and we are excited to see that transition happen. Yeah, speaking of emcees, and that's enough for me. Ladies and gentlemen, Tom Labons. Jackie Goldberg, it warms my heart to have you here. You taught me so much. You gave me the most valuable piece of advice about fear, which is, you said, "When people fear things out there, it has to be confronted. It has to be recognized. You cannot move people past fear unless you recognize it and confront it and deal with it." And I think there's so much in this world we fear right now and you have been a warrior. So much of this city has been made better by you. I have been humbled to come after you and I'm really touched that you're here as well. And the folks who spoke, Sandra, who embodies to me what this city is about and what... You said kind words about me. It's back at you 10 times. You make... Your entire day is spent making sure those voices that otherwise would be discarded and forgotten are right there, center at the table. And I love you and thank you for all of your incredible work, support and friendship. And Mary, you embody to me what is this city as well. How do we bring together all these disparate elements and say, as a business organization, we can be progressive and figure out ways on the environment, on housing and all of these things to be able to come together and to move this city? It is no easy task and you are an extraordinary leader and thank you for those words. And Cheryl, that you are here speaking at all says it all. For me, we really have shared amazing times. I mean, those moments when we're sometimes the last person to speak to each other at the end of the night or the first in the morning, it's because we both love this city so much and the people who fill this council chamber and make it work and those who are not here, who are upstairs in this building and in other city facilities and trucks right now and are out there making sure that people have power, except for Jimmy Kimmel. And, you know, everybody else who is out there serving this city, you embody that. And Pat, you too, and Gary, thank you so much for your extraordinary words and leadership. My family, I love you guys. It is... I was born at the Good Samaritan Hospital, just a few footsteps to the west of here on my mother's birthday in 1971. And you set the bar for me about why public service was important. And I want to thank you for being here, for being extraordinary support and for Tommy and Amy, thank you for being my home. Thank you for being my love. Just before anything else, I just wanted to recognize everybody from the 13th Council District who's here. If you're here in the audience from the 13th Council District, stand up for a second so we can give you a round of applause and thank you for who you are and your extraordinary Thank you for sharing your council member with this body because when you become president, you don't get much extra. I think you get like half a person extra, which we're trying to work on to make sure that a council president's office. But I want to start with my staff because every single time you shared me, we continued to serve the 13th Council District without a moment lost, without a bit of work taken away. What that meant is that people had to work twice as hard. That meant that they had to stay here late, burning the midnight oil, get here early. And when all of the 14 members ask something of us, we tried to serve, together with Ms. Perry, together with Ms. Gruel, together with Mr. Zine, who I'll return to in a second. I want to say that the staff that I've had has been incredible. I don't have time to thank them all. You all know and especially I want to thank Cecilia Cabeo who is here and Guy Lipa who, as the floor whips, go around here having to be the ones who make sure democracy functions. But thank you to my district for sharing me for the last six years and I ain't going anywhere. You still stuck with me for another year and a half and I'm going to love every last minute of it. And I want to thank the members of the city council because four times you elected me to be your leader. You did that and it was the most basic piece of democracy when you say, "Okay, we will vote for you. Now take care of us." You believed in Los Angeles and you believed in this institution. And while this can be a frustrating place, it can be a place where democracy is messy. It can be a place where I know moments from now, after all these great compliments, you stay humble because somebody's going to come up here and tell me, you know, what a bad council member I am too. And that's good because it keeps you humble. But this is exactly why we are here because we remember we are not greater than this place. I remember that Warren Christopher wrote in his memoirs, the great Warren Christopher, who was such a dear friend and mentor, that in his second term, when he was no longer Secretary of State, he was asked by folks, "Do you regret not being there for a second term?" And he said, "To even have regret for a moment would have implied that somehow this office was mine, when in fact I was just here for a temporary time taking care of a public office." And that's what sitting up here has been. It's felt like my desk, but I've known that they would come when I'd take these pictures and take them to another desk and one day they will come when I'm no longer sitting around this desk. And I appreciate that somebody brought up my family. I have up here a picture of my great-grandmother and my grandfather. It's like my dad. My dad usually tears up at this moment. Guadalupe, who came across the border carrying her son in her hands at one-year-old and came here to Los Angeles, not knowing what she was going to find. And Jose Weezer's grandfather built this building and went back to his family in Mexico. We have great-grandchildren of slaves that are here, the first Lebanese-American to ever be on the city council, first openly gay man to be elected to the city council, people who have come from families of 100 brothers, it seems like, in Silver Lake and lived in the same zip code their whole life because they love this place called Los Angeles. And they all believe that this town would define you not by who you were and your last name and what language you spoke and how much money you had in your pocket, but it was defined by how big your heart was and the ideas that you had and your willingness to work hard. Today, I stand here during my last council meeting as your council president and I'm as humbled as the first day I came to this day. And I'm even as blown away as I was as a junior high school student when I walked in that door back there as we do. We forget because we're here every single day what it feels like to be for the first time honored at that podium or what it's like to be a student to walk in here and go, "Wow." You know, this building was built like a cathedral and it is. It's like a cathedral of democracy, a place where anybody can come here and yell at us or compliment us. You can't do that in Washington. You can't do that in Sacramento, but right here, and with all the things going on, we try to pay attention as close as we can. It's tough to do, but those folks will be heard and they can come time and time again as some folks do. This is a building though that was imbued with our idealism. It's imbued in that by the things we see over the doors when we enter here, by the sand in that cornerstone that maybe Mr. Weezer's grandfather helped lay that has sand from every county and water from every mission in California, from the flags that fly above us reminding us of our past and the seal that does the same. But it's how we act in this building that truly sets us apart. In this council chamber, the things that we do make differences in people's lives so that we can remember that it isn't just about the few, but the many, like Mr. Alacon is pushing us to do when we look at our banking system and the lives, young, promising lives that were otherwise discarded, that Mr. Cardenas wouldn't give up on. And so that he made sure that we would expand our gang programs and not just the LAPD, but both together. And Mr. Englander focusing us on becoming a city that takes trash and certainly turns it into an energy that discards the ways of the past and has customer service first and foremost. And today, people are eating because Mr. Weezer had said, "Well, why are we wasting food that we have here in the city that can be taken to food banks and that we can have more ethical government?" And so with a little piece of paper, you write a motion and suddenly people's lives change. And Mr. Corretts, who has been... I appreciate that you said about me, but you've been the leader on gun violence. You've been the person who has time and time again, not just in this body, but not just in Sacramento, but also in local government before that, stood up saying that, you know, even when it's not popular long before it's a trend, we'll do something to save lives by making sure that guns sometimes aren't in the hands of criminals who kill people. And Mr. Krikorian, who is... Because today, his actions were part of why there are jobs here in Los Angeles, because the movies have come back here, because we have a local hiring preference ordinance now that will allow LA city businesses to keep jobs right here when we know that 15% of our people are unemployed. Mr. Labons, who wakes up every single morning to greet the sun. I remember the first time I met him, he was only 42 minutes late, but he was... He showed up at Griffith Park and we had an amazing walk together and he started telling me about his love of the city and it is completely infectious, infectious. It is something that when I see you on Hollywood Boulevard or out on Silver Lake, I know that together, you know, you are the person that we've been looking for for a long time to truly be a cheerleader for the city. Any moment we feel that we don't live in a great city, just talk to Tom. We aren't off the cliffs of bankruptcy and fiscal disaster because Bernard Parks helped steer us away from that, stood his ground when it's not popular at all and made sure that we were there. Jan Perry, just look around downtown. She's taught us about urban revitalization, what it means to bring a main part of the city back and to have people come there and not only just work there, but live there and experience it in the deepest way and to bring wetlands to South LA where they never existed so that environmentalism isn't just for West LA and for the mountains, but for everybody. Ed Reyes wouldn't give up on the place that gave us our name, the Los Angeles River. Before, we were named as a city, we were named as a river. And Ed Reyes, whether it's fighting for affordable housing, whether it's making sure that the poor are never forgotten because he can see it and feel it and knows what that poverty feels like, he has brought us back the backbone in so many ways of this city. And Mr. Rosendahl, who you said some kind things about me, but I think there isn't a single major person or campaign in the second half of the 20th century, in the beginning of this century, that you haven't touched in some ways. You're like the Forrest Gump of politics who has been there at every step of the way, with each Kennedy, with each amazing person. You know, nobody can come in here without you having visited their country, worked on their campaign, known their family, interviewed them on your show, and you stand up to remind us what democracy is. Sometimes when we don't want to speak on something, you stand up to educate everybody and let us know why that issue is important. I love you. And Herb Wesson, there are headquarters right now in this city of companies like Cota because Herb Wesson took that or places like Midtown Crossing where for decades people have waited for it to happen. And if you ever want to meet a can-do person, it's Herb Wesson, somebody who understands and who knows where he comes from and what he's doing and how to get the job done. And Dennis Zine, a man who I saw have tears in his eyes when he signed a Beirut-Los Angeles Sister City Agreement because since his grandparents came here from Lebanon, his parents born here, never went there, he born here, never went there, have been able to go back and to connect where his family and where he is from and that huge heart that defines who Dennis Zine is. It's been awesome to serve with you. Thank you for all the times, you and Jan and Wendy and before when I was an assistant Pro Tem, the ways that Alex and Alex Padilla and Cindy Miskowski taught me how to do this job. It's been extraordinary serving with all of you. So I will conclude because I appreciate, Mr. Wesson, that when you came in, you said this wasn't going to be about you and you talked about who these individuals were, but I wanted to highlight what these people do every single day. And by the way, for somebody listening for the first time or who's never been to City Hall, that's half of what we do, maybe even just a third. Most of the time, we're out there in our districts, making sure that potholes are filled, making sure that people who are on the verge of homelessness have a place to sleep that night, comforting a family who's just lost their son to gang violence and providing food with them every single night. This is the work of what city council is. L. E. Wiesel once said in 1999 that indifference can be so compelling, even seductive, because it turns real things into mere abstractions. But we can't afford to let the real things that we do when people become indifferent about politics and they see Washington not solving their problems and fearful that Sacramento can't. We can't afford to be indifferent. And thank you for allowing me to make a difference with you because when we have been able to do that, we know why we're here. We're here on borrowed time. These are not our desks. This is not our city hall, any more than anybody else here. And I have loved six years of helping these meetings go forward, of preserving free speech here, of allowing us to do the work that we are sent here by our people to do. And I can't wait to take that hat off and to sit back down where it all started for another year and a half and beyond. Thank you all and God bless you all. And my very, very last thing, I want to thank the incredible folks that sit up here from our city clerk's office and our city attorney's office, our sound folks from ITA, the CAO and CLA who make sure that our legislation flows, our general services and LAPD officers who keep order here. They're really the guardians of democracy and it's been humbling to work with you. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon Cardenas, Englander, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Labons, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. And my father is telling me to thank Amy, but I did, Dad, don't worry. Thank you to everybody who took time out of their day to be there for that presentation, and thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. And we will be sending everything forth with today. Let's run through the agenda, and we'll come back then for three more presentations. Thank you to our Million Moments, AYSO Girl Soccer, and LAPD presentation for your patients. We will be getting those shortly, but let's go through the agenda while we still have 12 members for each of the ordinances. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Englander moves, and Mr. Alacon seconds. Next order of business.
Committory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wesson moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. Without objection, those are approved as well. If we can go through the first items.
Items one and two are items noted for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards on those?
Yes, cards on both.
Okay, we will go ahead and pull those for cards from the public. Next items.
Items three through 11 are items which public hearings have been held.
All right. Anybody wishing to call three through 11 special? Three through 11? Yes, 11 for Mr. Rosendahl. Other specials? Okay, if not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next items, please.
Items 12 through 19 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
All right, we do have a card, I'm sorry, those are requiring public hearings? Madam Clerk?
Yes, those require public.
So do we have cards on any of those?
Cards on 12, 16, 17, and 19.
Okay, let's go ahead and close the other public hearings. Other specials, colleagues, 12 through 19. 14 for Mr. Alacon. If there's no other specials, let's take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, item 20 and 21, items which public hearings have been held, there was a request to continue item 21 to January 4th.
All right, is there any objection to continuing 21 till the 4th? If not, let's go ahead and do that. Other specials? Number 20? Okay, Ms. Perry?
20?
Uh, we do.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We'll call it special as well. Other?
Yeah, ask 15 to go forthwith for Mr. Parks.
Everything's going to go forthwith today. Any next items? I'm sorry.
Items 22 and 23 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration. There's amended motion coming forth for item 23. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, if there's no objection to these, those are before us. Mr. Rosendahl calls 22 special.
Yeah, and 22, I want to hold at the desk for the amending motion.
Okay, and 23, I'll call special. All right, we'll take up the card on item one real quick. Mr. Arnold Sacks, if you'd like to come forward. And then we'll come back for presentations. We just want to make sure on these two ordinances that we hear the public comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Arnold Sacks, and your quote that you mentioned, turning real things into abstractions, pretty much could almost be the motto for this city council and the government and city of LA. Because I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, you're making changes here, amending sections of the municipal code, which I guess you're allowed to do, because your municipal code can be changed by the council. And I recall sitting in this chambers a couple of weeks ago, when you had a change to the make businesses more friendly, and it was explained that when the city charter discussed what local was, it was defined as the state and the county. But the key here is he, the city attorney mentioned that it was a city charter. And you can't really make changes to the city charter, that has to be done by voters, if I'm correct. So your idea of turning real things into abstraction, conversely, it's important for the public to understand when abstractions are turned into real things.
If you could bring it back to the skep, sir, respectfully.
I'm explaining, I'm using it as an example. So the fact that you're doing this, fine, but the important thing for people to realize is when they're dealing, when the council is dealing with a real thing, turning it into an abstraction, and turning an abstraction into a real thing, because then you're doing work that doesn't have to be done. That's the important lesson to be learned from this item and the comment.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. All right, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item number one. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. We'll take one more public comment on item number 12, and then we'll go to presentations. John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward on item number 12.
I also signed up for item number two. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, or just simply Facebook Walsh Confidential. Last Friday, when I was here, we received 9,000 successful server requests as a result of my call. And also, we are starting to Facebook, become our friend on Facebook. I'd just like to say that on item number 12, this concerns an ordinance about contract bidders' contribution during fundraising restrictions. Well, we know, we're in favor of this, we know that it's out of control. It's not about we, it's not about me, it's about money, okay? It's all about money. And as you know, there's a developer who wants to tear down my rent-controlled apartment. That's why I'm going to make sure you're not, you didn't, you don't win. One minute, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. On item 12, I think we're holding it on the desk. Do you want to speak on, there's an amendment first that's being circulated, but sure.
If there's someone here who can answer for me, what it means to revise the matching funds trust fund, what that exactly means, what are the ramifications of that?
If you don't mind, just because we have three presentations, we'll hold it on the table, and we'll come back to it.
I'll ask it again.
Yeah, sure, no problem.
No problem.
Let's go then to Council District 12. Mr. Englander, are you ready?
Council members, I want to remind you why we're all really here, why we wake up every day and come to work and come to this building, because it's about what's behind me. It's about these kids, our future, our future leaders, many of which will be sitting around this horseshoe in the very near future, I have no doubt, because they're real champions. I'm honored to make this presentation to AYSO Girl Soccer. First, I want to acknowledge the head coach, Oscar, assistant coach, Victoria, John, who's a dear friend and assistant commissioner of Region 174 in the North Valley. Our players, Alyssa, Isabella, Chloe, Sahar, Deborah, Lisa, Isabella, Katrina, and Shannon, all behind me as well. And the parents, because they wouldn't be here without the loving support and guidance of their parents. We are here to honor these amazing achievements, some of the very talented and hard-working young girls in our community, the Dynamite Divas. These young ladies are the 2011 California State Champions for the Girls Under 10 Division in AYSO Soccer. The Dynamite Divas are from the North Valley, AYSO Region 174, and their home field is in Granada Hills at the Youth Sports Complex. These competitions started in September of 2007, or 2010. Most of the season, they played in the San Fernando Valley, but as they moved higher and higher in the ranking, they traveled throughout the entire state. In February 2011, they played in the section championship in Bakersfield, where they were the winning team. They played all the teams who come from Northern California to the San Fernando Valley, and they won. Then they went to the state championships in Granada Grove, and on March 12, 2011, they played against champion teams from all across Southern California. They won both of their games and came away with a state division championship. This was an amazing achievement for such young athletes, and I'm proud to have them living, playing, and going to school in my district and in our community. To the parents, my hat goes off to them. Congratulations on such a proud accomplishment. You know, it doesn't just take a village to raise a family anymore, it takes a valley. Thank you very much. I was hoping that Tom LeBonde would catch that one. This is also a great achievement for the coaches, and again, I want to congratulate them and the children. You're all going to be on television, so smile, make sure you're smiling. And I would also like to turn it over to John to say a few words, a commissioner, a great friend from the community, to congratulate and to thank these wonderful parents and children as well. So John, come on up. Congratulations.
Thank you. Just want to say that this team started their hard work in August of 2011, and practiced hard, and played hard, and was fully committed to doing the best they could do out there, and they did it. They, they're the number-one team in over 1,700 teams in the state of California. So it's a tremendous achievement for them, and congratulations to their coach, Coach Oscar Pariente, and of course, their parents for all their support. And also want to say thank you to Council Member Mitch Englander for all his support through the years, and we know that he's going to continue to help his community in every way possible. And the girls autographed a soccer ball for you.
Oh, that's fantastic. I love it. Oh, that's great.
So now you have something to put in your office to remember them.
All right, we'll take a picture of all of us holding under it. Fantastic. Oh, that's great. Thank you very much. This is, we'll have you join us around the back, but let me say one more thing. This is absolutely the year, once again, of the women, because these young ladies who have achieved so much while maintaining their educational and their academic excellence to win the championship, this is also the year that in 2011, three women won the Nobel Peace Prize. And so, when we recognize these outstanding young leaders, particularly women, it's such an honor to be here, to be present. I live with three women, so I know full well the importance that they truly run the household and run the country and now the world, and so, and the village and the valley, absolutely. So let's congratulate them once again. So thank you very much. All right. High five. We're going to go in the back and take a picture, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Toss it to Mr. LeBonde, she wants to.
It's a soccer ball. All right, go here, you're going to go ahead and follow them this way.
Thank you. And Mr. Englander, would you like to, your second one now, or you want to wait?
I'll, second one, back to back, that'd be great. I'll join you guys in the back in one minute. Thank you very much. I'll be back. Hey, Gary, come on up. This next presentation is one that I'm truly honored to present, not only because it's such a prestigious award that's only given out to one individual, it's such a prestigious award that you have to go through so much to get to. But the recipient this year is a dear friend who I've been very, very close friends with for many, many years, and to see him earn this, to know that he has earned it, is remarkable and very rewarding personally. But is the president, Vice President and Creative Director of Aaron Thomas and Associates, Gary Thomas, who was born in the San Fernando Valley, went to CSUN, has worked for nearly 40 years with over a dozen local nonprofit organizations. He helped start the Economic Alliance of the San Fernando Valley immediately after the earthquake to rebuild the San Fernando Valley. He's been involved with at-risk youth programs, with intervention programs and prevention programs, with educational programs, with trying to improve public education. He has worked tirelessly and selflessly for no recognition whatsoever to help make our community a better place. He got involved in the Boys and Girls Club of the West Valley, right around the block from where my uncle was killed. And this was a place locally in the community that had no place to go for at-risk youth. They got involved in the Boys and Girls Club and took over an old mortuary. Imagine that, a mortuary being converted to a place for at-risk youth. He immediately converted the mortuary into a state-of-the-art facility for these children. There's over 4,500 kids now that are served every day in the San Fernando Valley that wouldn't otherwise have a place to go after school or on the weekends for help with their studies. And Gary is, this is really unique. Gary Thomas not only was the recipient of the Fernando, of the Fernando Award this year, but is the only time in history where a father and a son were both honored. His father was honored many years ago with the Fernando Award, and then here he comes years later to fill those shoes and carry on a legacy of the Thomases to give back to community and achieve it. I personally want to recognize a great friend who's been so honest and ethical and passionate and caring for others, that this is truly in honor for me to present Gary Thomas with a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, thanking Gary. And I've got, I want to just tell a real quick story about the presentation here. This is one of the longest certificates that I've had framed. Paul Krikorian and I were honored to open the envelope at the Fernando Awards and present this to Gary, and I took the envelope, because it's a secret ballot award, and I quickly stuck it in my pocket, and after the dinner, Gary came up to me and said, where's the envelope? I wanted to keep it, I wanted to see the envelope with my name on it. I said, I don't know what happened to it. And I came home, and I saved it, knowing that I was going to frame it with the resolution. Now, this is a great other story, that he's got something to put on his wall, because a year ago, Gary and I stood and watched a fire in Chatsworth burn down his entire business. They lost everything. It burned to the ground, and it burned for hours. And the next morning, Gary Thomas calls me up at home after losing everything. All his worldly possessions were in his office, his collections, his artwork, all his work, the entire business, his printing presses, millions of dollars in equipment burned to the ground. And the very first thing he said to me when he called me the next morning was, I've got hundreds of employees that I need to place so they can continue to work, to put food on their table, and that's my focus right now. That's all he cared about. Not one person was laid off, not one person went without a paycheck. They rebuilt and reopened, and today are open for business back in Chatsworth, in the city of Los Angeles, and this is a guy who's resilient. And this is a guy who's resilient, who cares about others, and is passionate. And so, I want to say thank you to Gary Thomas. Congratulations on deserving and winning and achieving the Fernando Award status in the San Fernando Valley, and congratulations on behalf of the city. Gary Thomas.
Thank you very much. Do you want to say a couple of words?
Well, thank you very much. Just quickly, I'd like to thank Mitch and Councilman Zine. We actually are located in Councilman Zine's district, but we serve kids all over the west San Fernando Valley. And I know the award was not just for the Boys and Girls Club, it was for, actually, I've been on about 30 nonprofit boards, but the Boys and Girls Club is the most important one, and we've got Boys and Girls Clubs throughout Los Angeles and most of your districts, if not all of them. If you don't have one and you want to start one, talk to me, because I'd love to help you do that. We're serving hundreds of thousands of kids in Los Angeles right now and making a huge difference. I'll just give you one quick stat. We're running all the after-school programs at Cunego Park High School. We started working there with a 53% graduation rate. We're working with them very closely now as a partnership with the school, and our graduation rate is up to 97% among our members. So, that's what we're doing out there.
Mr. Zine would like to, before you disappear...
Thank you. Thank you. Mitch, thank you for bringing Gary forward for this wonderful, and I know that the Fernando Award, and there's many, many folks who've devoted a lot of concern and support for the valley. You and your dad have been there legendary in the highs and the lows of the San Fernando Valley. I want to offer my congratulations to you. I know that your love for the community, your love for getting involved in activities, and I don't know of any organization that I've been to that you haven't been there as a supporter, a financial supporter, a member of the Board of Directors. You give your heart and your soul to that great San Fernando Valley, so I want to wish you well with that, recognition well deserved, and never trust Mitch, because he hides things from you all the time. So, Gary, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Mr. Reyes, yes, and then we have a presentation for Mr. Labonge, but yes, should we do the presentation first, Mr. Reyes? Okay. Is it just a, you want to reconsider number one, right? Let's go ahead and open the roll. As Mr. Labonge goes there, we'll open the roll and reconsideration of item one, please. Who's opened the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Item number one.
Twelve eyes.
All right, that's back before us. We recognize Mr. Labonge. Unless, is it a quick thing, Mr. Reyes?
I was just hoping we can do item roll before we lose quorum.
Yeah, we will, for sure. Okay. Mr. Labonge.
All right. Ed, roll clip, please. Action. Lisa, roll clip, please.
Action?
My name is Bond, James Bond.
I will look for you, I will find you.
I believe you have my stapler.
That's where I call a closed encounter.
Well, let's hear it right there for that great flash of greatness from 20th Century Fox, 20th Century Fox Home Entertainment and Fox Gives Year of a Million Moments Campaign. Film is one of the greatest of all cultural developments in the last 100 years, from 1927, when the first talkie was made right off of Sunset Boulevard and Van Ass Avenue, all the way to today, motion pictures have an impact on my life and your life, on everybody's life. And Fox has a program to make a difference in the lives of the program, where Fox gives, it is a program of a million giveaways of movies to organizations where they wouldn't have an opportunity to see a film. I just want to call on Gretchen Lewatzky, who is a great leader for Fox. She's the community voice for Fox here in Los Angeles. She's the one that we love from Fox, and we want to call you to say a few words about the program, what inspires Fox to step up here to be the community partner, like an octopus in everyone's community, helping Boys and Girls Clubs, other organizations, and making a difference. Gretchen.
Thank you very much. An octopus, I'm flattered.
Come on.
I love that, I love it.
That's Fox, not you, baby.
Thank you, Councilmember Labonge. Council President Garcetti, congratulations, may fond farewell, and good luck on your future endeavors. And Council President-elect Wesson, hello, Council President-elect Wesson. Hello, Council President-elect Wesson. Good luck on your future leadership, and how about those Dorsey Dons? We just did a fabulous job. On behalf of Fox Entertainment and our Fox Gives program, I just want to thank you for this beautiful resolution, and this group of people behind me is really who are, we're here to honor. Fox Gives is a program that is about investing in the community, and it's how Fox goes out and gives back to the community. We have a nationwide program about giving back. This year, we were able to donate a million DVDs across the country to organizations, and this ranged from anything from U.S. vets to not-for-profits, after-school programs. Let's see, we did libraries, we did police departments, firefighters, we did girls programs, boys programs, and they're all, we have about 20 of the organizations here. So, I want to, first of all, start out with, in the back row, if our Fox Gives team would either stand up or raise their hands. I think they're back here. You guys stand up. There's the Fox, the Fox Gives team. Okay, and then the reason I want to do this is because these people, the partners that are here today actually came to support Fox, but we really need to support them, because all these organizations are out there in the community, working where federal funds are being depleted or discounted, state funds and local funds, but they're still out there serving hundreds of thousands of families and organizations. So, I'd like to take a moment, really quick, to introduce the people that came here today. No Limits, which is an organization that works with the hearing impaired. Rancho Los Amigos National Rehabilitation Organization. Laser, who actually was so sweet, and they went to Councilmember Labonge and asked for this resolution. City Lights, which works with a lot of organizations around town, the Los Angeles Fire Department, Wright Girl, the Children Nature Institute. You guys raise your hands as we go through it. New Economics for Women, the Heart Association of Los Angeles, LA's Best After-School Enrichment Program, Los Angeles Police Department, El Centro de Pueblo, Youth Opportunities United, Los Angeles Public Library, Partnership for Los Angeles Schools, Youth Policy Institute, the Boys and Girls Clubs of West Los Angeles and San Gabriel Valley, the Sheriff's Foundation of Los Angeles, and the American Red Cross. So, these are just some of the groups that we gave to. We really care about this organization, these organizations. We were able to work with this program across the United States, but we were able to focus 20% of our resources, which was over 200,000 of our items were able to be given right here in Los Angeles, where our home is. So, we were really, really proud to do that, and we made a lot of new contacts and partnerships, and so, we're just really happy. But these are the people that actually make it happen, and they're in virtually every one of your council districts. We were able to work with the mayor's office, with the mayor's office of strategic partnerships, the city comptroller's office, and pretty much every one of your city staff, council district staff. So, we're really, really, very proud of this resolution, and thank you very much. And we have some really, really good cookies, too, so I don't know if you got those.
Gretchen, we want to thank you, because without Fox and this effort here, they have product, and product is important to share. And when you share it and someone in the Boys and Girls Club sees a movie, a film, that inspires them to climb a mountain higher, when a young lady sees a movie that says, "I'm going to have that job..."
Well, that's why we do it, actually, because all of these people could potentially be Fox employees in the future.
Well, that's very good, but also to be inspired, so film inspires us. But I want to thank everybody, and, Mr. President, we're going to perform this great proclamation and give this to you to say thank you, but ask everybody after we do this. We'll take a big picture in the back. And I also want to thank the American Red Cross, who was just here the other day. Jan Perry organized this quarterly, and the wonderful job you do in donation of blood to the Red Cross. Give them a shout out. Okay, all right. Mr. President, thank you, thank you, Fox. Fox cares.
Thank you, Fox gives.
Yes. Fox cares and gives.
Thank you, Fox, and to the most incredible assemblage of nonprofits I think that's ever been at that podium together. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, sorry.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to reconsider item number one for an amendment.
We've reconsidered it, so you want to do the amendment?
Yes. Essentially, colleagues, I want to ask if we could instruct the general manager of the Housing Department to conduct a study of the SKEP fee and determine an appropriate slip, split, 50/50 or other percentage to be paid between tenants and property owners on an annual basis. We applied in 2013 SKEP bills and reported 90 days, so I'm asking for a study. It'll ground us down as to what is a true balance for both tenants and property owners. So, we're just asking for the study on this. Do you have an amendment?
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, you okay? It's appropriate, all right. Go ahead, let's prepare the roll, then, as amended, 1A.
Thank you, sir.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, that is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go ahead, and we'll take up item 12. I actually missed two cards, because they were put together with 10 and 12, so my apologies, and then we'll get to any discussion on those items. Ann Williams, is Ann still here? There she is. Thanks, sorry about that. And then Trent Lang will follow.
Good morning, I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association. We appreciate the intent of the contractor bidding ordinance, and I'm just here to ask for a very narrow, specific revision that will make it more practical and enable better compliance. The ordinance requires bidders and underwriters to submit basic information at the time of the bid, including things like their name and address, and if there is any change in this information, the company is required to update that form within five business days. The penalty for violation of this is to make the contractor ineligible to bid or be considered for contract extensions, and additional penalties can accumulate. So, I can tell you from personal experience that for a lot of larger companies, some of them cannot order coffee in five days, and therefore, we're just asking for a slight revision, so that businesses have 30 days to update the information in the reporting form. Again, we want to comply with the intent of the ordinance, but we just need a little bit more reasonable time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Our next speaker is Trent Lang.
Hello, Trent Lang, President of the California Clean Money Campaign, here to speak in favor of adopting this ordinance. For us here in the campaign finance community that worked so hard on Measure H with all of you, this is an exciting time. We especially want to thank Council President Garcetti for his leadership on campaign finance reform and clean money over the years. You've been quite a champion on this, and especially getting Measure H passed. Councilmember Weisar was also key in getting this passed, especially the matching funds portion. We're looking forward to working with all of you to implement that portion with the Ethics Commission to strengthen the system, based off of the voters' overwhelming passage of this idea that campaign finance bidder ban and extending the matching fund system was 75% of the vote last March. So, we would look forward to working with you to strengthen this and have a, come up with a comprehensive package early next year. Thank you very much for your support. We urge your support on this initiative. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Perry, item number 12.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Is the city attorney still here? I just want to ask a quick question, just for clarification on this item today. I've read it, I know you've read it, and I wanted to ask about it. I know that there will be some discussion in the future about lifting the cap on contribution limits in these upcoming races, and I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing in here, especially revising the matching funds trust fund, that had anything to do with that.
Councilmembers, Deputy City Attorney Renee Stottle. No, councilmember, there's nothing in this ordinance that deals with contribution limits that will be part of a package that the Ethics Commission brings back to you probably in May of next year.
So, then the reference to revising the matching trust, matching funds trust fund, can you just explain what that means?
Yes, there is a technical amendment that relates to some administrative code provisions regarding the matching funds trust fund. All that that language did or was, is there to accomplish is to remove the $8 million cap that had been in the administrative code, had previously been in the charter, which was removed by the voters when they voted on Measure H last, this past spring.
Okay. Thank you very much for the, thank you for the clarification, and I look forward to wrestling with those other issues when the Ethics Commission brings that forward mid-year next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other members wishing to be heard? If not, we have the amendment on 12, 12A, that's been circulated. So, as amended, we have before us this item. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure, we'll take 22 out of order. We still do have to do general public comment. Okay, all right, and we'll do 22, and then we'll come back for general public comment. Thank you for folks' patience on that. We will be there very shortly. Mr. Rosendahl, item 22.
Mr. President, colleagues, we've approved and we've worked on the 22A amending motion, and I'd like us to incorporate it in the issue and vote yes for item 22A. Mr. President, we're ready. Thank you. Deanne, do you have to say anything? No, okay. Mr. President?
Hello.
I'm sorry, my apologies. As amended?
Yes.
Okay. So, as amended, 22, we'll go ahead and open the roll, as amended by 22A. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. As you can see, I'm on my way out. Messing up left and right. Thank you. Our first speaker is Scott Crawford for a general public comment. Scott, you're up as our first speaker, then Dr. Tom Williams for general public comment. Thank you for everybody for your patience as we waited that. Thank you.
Well, I couldn't let, hi, my name is Scott Crawford. I'm a former president of the Friends of Hollyhock House, and I couldn't let today go by without, without saying congratulations to you. You know that when I walked into Hollyhock House, it was a mess, and I was a very angry old man, and through Eric's guidance, he took me and showed me a path to get Hollyhock House to be on the national preservation list, and now, through my work with the Frank Lloyd Wright Building Conservancy and Eric's guidance, hopefully in 2014, Hollyhock House will be a UNESCO World Heritage Site, and we'll be getting more money for the house. Eric, it's through you that you've taught me a way, a light, and you've guided me through my life and given me a new role, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Scott. I really appreciate the kind words. Dr. Tom Williams is our next speaker. Is Dr. Williams here? Arnold Sachs, come on down. After that will be Noel Weiss.
Good morning. Mr. President, consider this deja vu all over again, but good morning, you criminals. You know, again, based on your accolades you got this morning for your leadership when the city was facing bankruptcy, nobody mentioned the greatest accomplishment you managed to steer the city through, and that was getting the pay raise, you know, the 4% pay raise for the majority of the city union workers. That's costing the city an extra $30 million a year. In the midst of facing a financial crisis, and you could read about all the cities in this country going through financial crisis, laying people off, the City of LA was one of the few that managed to give its employees a 4% pay raise. That's an accomplishment. And by the way, I could have answered HJPs question regarding the, her misunderstanding of the item on the agenda. It means the same thing as a binding MOU and a non-binding MOU. You know what that means? Means the public... Means the public's taking it. But I'd like to, again, go back to the item you had on your agenda yesterday. Was it yesterday? Regarding the, um, appointment of Mr. Reyes to the Gold Line Construction Authority. Remember, you said, taking an abstraction and making it a reality, or taking a reality and making it an abstraction. So my question would be, if it was just legalized in October, and the councilman was meeting, was attending meetings based on the MTA schedule in 2010, and he was receiving payment because the state law allows payment to, for board members of the construction authority, can you say, "City of Bell"?
Thank you. Uh, our next speaker is Noel Weiss, then it'll be John Walsh.
Um, morning, Council. My comments basically are directed to the councils as a whole, but the, the focus is basically on Mr. Carratz, who is now not listening. Um, my question, it's kind of a rhetorical question, is I wonder when Mr. Carratz for so, basically gave up, uh, the pursuit of truth in return for his pursuit of power. I don't recall, and I did attend a lot of events that Mr. Carratz put on and debates, I don't recall Mr. Carratz ever saying that when he ran for city council, he was basically going to give away variances and land use entitlements like they were candy, and that's exactly basically what he's doing. Um, it is not right. Um, I've had to now, uh, really unfortunately, it's really kind of sad that I've had to have now two courts, one a court of appeal and one a superior court judge on Wednesday, basically slap the hand of Mr. Carratz and this city council for not following the rules and the law. Mr. Carratz seems to be immune to it, the rest of this council doesn't seem to want to, they, they seem to want to sanction it. There's moral authority here, ladies and gentlemen, that is at stake. The moral authority of our institutions isn't, isn't as high as it needs to be, and you know what? We're not getting your A-game, people. We are not getting it at all. And honestly, the mediocrity that is being presented here is not right. I, the, the citizens of Mr. Carratz, whether it's Westwood or Sherman Oaks, they expect leadership out of their council member. They expect him to lead. We have a problem with this Chabad because they are going out and they're doing, without permits, without land use entitlements, they're working on the project, Mr. Carratz is doing nothing, and his staff says he can't do anything. Please listen. His staff says they can't do anything because he would lose votes. I again call, and the community's going to call, your leadership, Mr. Carratz's leadership is now basically at stake. We've got to get this resolved, and you know what? When it comes right down to it, Mr. Kocorian can smirk, but the bottom line is, we got an SB 1818 on Samoa.
Sir, if you please refrain from personal comments. No, sir. I need you to calm down. Sir, I need you to relax.
No, Mr. Garcetti, this is the public's mic.
Sir, you're out of order right now, sir.
No, I'm not out of order.
Until you can contain yourself and make, not, address the councils as a whole first.
I'm addressing the council as a whole, I am describing Mr. Kocorian's.
And sir, if you can refrain from overly personal comments or abusive comments and express your opinions right now. Now, if you'd like to finish, you have 10 seconds left, sir.
Yes, I do. Bottom line is, the city attorney is not doing the job. The city attorney ran, is city attorney for the people, the bottom, and, and we are getting the city, we are not getting what the city attorney basically promised. We expect the laws and the rules to be enforced, it's not happening, and it needs to happen.
Our next speaker is, is John Walsh. Yes, Mr. Wesson.
Quick introduction, Jean-Paul. We have, visiting us today, the Southern California Director for Senate President Daryl Steinberg's office. Jean-Paul, would you give him a round of applause?
Thank you for, for being here. Appreciate it. Mr. Walsh is our next speaker. After Mr. Walsh will be Karsten Baumann.
I usually start by mentioning our website, but I would like to mention another website, Birdger Main. Please visit garsettiformayor.com. You have just seen a one and a half hour commercial sponsored by the city of Los Angeles on Channel 35 for financial contributions to Garcetti's campaign. So, send them in now, again, garsettiformayor.com, and I have to stick up, I have to do it for, uh, for the other two candidates. I have to stick it, stick up, and I think that we should have a one and a half hour thing for Jan, and we should have another one and a half hour honorary, honor thing, love fest commercial for Wendy Gruel. I think if you get one and a half hour for your, hours for your, uh, campaign, they should get one and a half hours for their campaign. Also, go to our new Facebook or Google Walsh Confidential. I'm worried about Mr. Parks, he didn't miss, miss a meeting for how many years now he's been out? The rumor is he's seriously ill. Is that true? I'd like to point out, come to Hollywood for the first time, there are no Christmas decorations on Hollywood Boulevard except for a two-block span. I'd like you to come to Hollywood and see where a white racist shot a, a, a black man in his car on Sunset and Vine three times in the head, and Eric says they were random bullets. I'm telling you right now, and I say, you had your whole family here, I'm saying Eric had his whole family here. I didn't see his foster children here today, and I didn't see them here, and I'd like to know, did you return them to the county, or don't you have those foster children anymore? Thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Our next speaker is Karsten Baumann, after that is Michael Carrion.
Hi, good afternoon, Council. Uh, my name is Karsten Baumann, and I'm resident of Sherman Oaks, um, in Councilman Carratz's district. Uh, first of all, I would like to say that I'm not here because of me or because, uh, what I want, but I'm here because of what the city council did do in the past and what they are not doing now in regards to the Chabad building in North Hollywood. I'm speaking here today as a member of the West Chandler Boulevard Neighborhood Association, representing over 200 of my neighbors. On August 16 of 2011, the Court of Appeal of the State of California ruled that this city council did not comply with the law when you granted the Chabad of North Hollywood permission to build a 12,000-square-foot building at Chandler Boulevard. As a result of this ruling in court, Chabad CUP, the variances and land use entitlements have been vacated. More importantly, their building permits are now invalid, as admitted by the city attorney's office in court. Despite the fact, this fact, the owners of this project continue to build it. Our lawsuit, in which I invested my personal time and money, sought to right a serious wrong put upon our neighborhood. The Court of Appeal of the State of California made it very clear, and yet, Councilman Carratz, you allowed this project, and you're allowing this project to continue. You have the power and the obligation to stop this illegal activity. We are asking you to show some leadership and respect for our community by ordering the Chabad to stop construction of this project. And last but not least, I want to say, um, in June of this year, I became a citizen of the United States, and in this process, I learned a lot about our constitution and so forth. And one of the things which stands out is that I've read many old times that nobody should be above the law, and I think that's true for all of us here, and I urge you to do the right things and to make the law in effect and put it right. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Michael Carrion is next, after that is Yvonne Michelle Autry. Is Michael Carrion here? Not, is Yvonne Michelle Autry here? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for an opportunity to address the council, and I'd just like to encourage you all, and in your current, um, positions that you hold and any future appointments, to always adhere to the highest qualities of equality, I mean, the highest pursuit of equality, justice, righteousness and truth for all of the constituents and all of the members of our community, not just those who are positively commissioning you in terms of real estate development and, and business, uh, development, uh, during this period of gentrification and economic redevelopment downtown. And, uh, for this, uh, holiday season, uh, again, in solidarity and support of, uh, organizations such as the Right to Share Food and the Hippie Kitchen, uh, again, I'd like to encourage the council, especially Jan Perry, not to prohibit organizations trying to enable those who are disadvantaged to reestablish themselves financially and re-enter society, uh, reestablishing or, um, able, who, who, so that they will be able to develop or redevelop their life skills and, uh, become, um, active and functional once again, uh, economically, so they're able to participate in our communities. And also, I'd like to take this opportunity to expose and reveal, uh, continued covert civilian illegal, uh, experiments perpetrated by the military and/or paramilitary against unsuspected, um, uh, members of the community, much like I think the Tuskegee experiments, um, which is why I believe that the, the city or the county is responsible for the homeless because it's created this constituency. Uh, and this constituency continues to be available for, uh, you know, as, as a resource for genome projects, food, drugs, sex, or however they're being used by, uh, those who are surveilling them. So again, I just encourage the city to, um, maintain access to provisions for these people, homeless people, people of, uh, destitution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. That will close the general public comment. We've had a request, um, to take item, uh, 20, and next out of order, Ms. Perry?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Um, we had a, uh, committee meeting this morning, and, um, a number of things came out of it. The recommendations that, uh, we still didn't have a, a CAO report, and I felt that that was extremely important to have that on the record so we could go eyes wide open on this. Uh, I did reiterate my, I support for a plastic bag ban, but I also stated that I wanted to do this correctly. Uh, so, out of the committee meeting this morning came the following recommendations. Uh, Bureau Sanitation to come back to us within, uh, 30 days regarding its outreach plan, and, uh, I also want to amend the report, uh, on here on the floor, to ask sanitation to deal with a, a possibility that people who come from other cities, neighboring cities with plastic bags, uh, if there's some way, we can also encourage, uh, recycling within the, uh, retail operations so that along with the ban, we have a way for people to, you know, recycle their plastic bags on-site in rest, stores and places like that. And I also asked, and this was the most, uh, significant part, was the, uh, city administrative officer and sanitation to come back with a report analyzing the impacts of the proposed bag ban on the city, the general fund, manufacturers and, and residents, and, uh, we needed that fiscal analysis so we can have the final piece, uh, and I wanted that report back in 30 days, uh, with a 60-day plan, uh, as amended as I just did on the floor. So, with that, um, it remains in committee, and, uh, not sure what action you want to take on this today, other than that it'll be back in committee in 30 days.
Thank you. We have a few other, uh, speakers on the queue, and then we do have cards as well. Uh, Mr. Carratz, maker of the motion, next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to, to clarify that, uh, we begin immediately on all these actions and that they be performed concurrently, um, and also that, uh, we deal with a deadline of March 31st, and, uh, maybe even put that into, uh, uh, an amendment to the committee report because that's the date by which our actions would impact, uh, state legislation banning plastic bags, and that's a very critical component of what we're trying to do to help provide leadership at the state level. So, if we could, if we could add that, um, otherwise, I look forward to, uh, an appropriate vetting of this. Um, although we have been looking at this issue for years, there still are things that, uh, could use a little additional analysis, there should be some outreach. Um, I think all the things that were talked about in committee are appropriate, but let's be sure we move this forward, um, and, and look at that, uh, March 31st as the, uh, the deadline to bring this finally to, uh, to council so that we have all the positive impacts that we hope to have by this legislation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, and I appreciate this, uh, very methodical approach to this issue. Uh, back in 2003, we formed the task force that brought together the private sector, the nonprofits, uh, the folks involved in the environmental issues and its impacts. Fast forward today, we're finally at this pivotal point, but one thing that still I feel needs to be addressed is the impact on displaced workers when this transition occurs. The other day, we had workers here that spoke about losing their jobs, that certain companies shut down. Well, that's part of the reality of this transition, but that reality should not have to be so harsh. I'd like to suggest and, and, uh, be a verbal, uh, motion to look at forming a transition task force where we bring in the different companies who are emerging with these changes. Uh, it's rather sketchy, I apologize, colleagues, but it would be to address, uh, the job displacement and develop job opportunities through the new industries that are coming up. Uh, the most, uh, comparable approach that I can speak to would be when we started building the Staples Center Arena, we were able to isolate community development department along with nonprofits to work with these, with this company to form a job center where you can develop referrals as people were looking for jobs, they can go to this place and find placement and/or applications for new opportunities. If we do have new industries emerging, because we are now looking at different methods by which we're going to be moving our goods, if it's not plastic bags, there'll be other kinds of products, let's have those products become viable destinations for jobs for people who will be losing their jobs because of the phasing out of these plastic bag companies in the city, if indeed they're going to phase out. So again, it's a way to be a little bit more humane about this process. It's not just letting people out in the cold, if you will, because they have been eliminated from their job. So I, I think that is, um, that would be an approach to deal with, with this issue. It's very complicated, but we can't pretend it doesn't exist. It's a real issue we need to address, and speaking with some of the folks from Hill Bay, they see the need for this. It's just a matter of linking up these kinds of strategies that allow us for these opportunities to exist. So, I don't want to stop the process, I think we need to move, move forward, but part of this analysis would be to form a task force that speaks to the creation of new job opportunities as plastic bag jobs are phased out. Uh, that's as clear as I can make it at this time. Tab your verbal amendment.
Sir, a second?
Yes. Is there a second for that? Yes, Mr. Weisar. Um, Mr. Rosendahl is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Reyes talked about 2003. I joined this group 2005, sat next to Mr. Reyes and Mr. Smith on the other side of me, and both of them agreed, we need to move forward with it. Now it's 2011, it's just about 2012. Uh, really, time has run out, and our city has to provide leadership. We've talked about it, we've talked about it. Uh, I happen to have, uh, the pleasure of serving the coastal community. Uh, frankly, I, I've seen that plastic going right into the ocean, and obviously, the fish are impacted, the entire ecosystem is impacted, and now it's time. It was difficult for me at first to go to the canvas bags, I got a dozen in each car, I forget them at times, but they're always in the car. I got to get off of the plastic mix. We all have to get off of the plastic mix. That's why I second, uh, Mr. Carratz's motion. We've got to get it done, folks, by the end of March. We need to get the experts of the planet in, we need to put people in a room, we've got to get it done. Obviously, Mr. Reyes is right about jobs, and the transition to plastic, uh, can be effective and, and can appreciate it, but we as a city have to show our leadership. I'm tired of constantly studying this to death. It's a no-brainer that those plastic bags are toxic and they cause issues to our ecosystem. So let's show that leadership, let's help lead the rest of the state and the nation on this issue. I mean, I'm a little embarrassed because, you know, I got a town called Santa Monica in the heart of my district, and to see them move forward with it and see the county move forward with it, to hear, "Well, there's legal issues." I know there's legal issues. There's legal issues in everything we do. That's part of our reality is to balance it out. But to me, frankly, we've reached a point where it's a no-brainer, we've got to get rid of plastic, we need to transition out of that for those bags every time you go into a store. It's for not only us, but for the future of humanity that we start cleaning up our act. I'll digress for one second, just to know they're in South Africa talking about climate change, and these people can't even get their act together? I mean, what kind of a world are we going to leave for those who are coming after us? So I'm hopeful with the leadership of this committee and this council, we can get this done, get it done by the end of March, because April 1st, we're either an April Fool's Day and we're fools again, or we've really showed that we are leaders with backbone to deal with a very critical ecological issue, and I want to make sure we do that, and so, God bless everybody, but let's make sure we move forward with this in a timely manner. In fact, I, I'd like to ask Ms. Perry, as she's chair of that committee, that she and that committee let the rest of us know where they're at, at various points within this mix, because I'd like to be standing here March 31st. Because I'd like to be standing here, March 31st, and have something on place, and we don't kick the can down the road for future generations and future council members and all this other kind of stuff. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Looking at the definition, there's a lot of different descriptions. And I know we talk about supermarkets. So you go to the supermarket, Mr. Keretz, and you buy apples and oranges. I understand those bags don't have a handle, those are still permitted. That's correct. It's the bag that that goes in that you're carrying out. So when you carry out in this bag, Z-bag, produced by Councilman Zine's office, this is what we're talking about. But when you go to a, say, a hardware store, and you buy items, and they give you the bag to put it in, a little show-and-tell here. I know there's different dimensions on the store, and the $2 million, and this, that, and the other. But we're talking about the bags like this with a handle. But a bag that is going to carry nuts and bolts and things is still permitted, as long as it doesn't have a handle? And then you put it in this bag? I'm trying to get definition. If I'm looking at definition, there's a number of pages how it's described. And my concept is we see some of the department stores are now getting into food products. 99 Cent Store, for example, they're selling not only items, but food items. So when it comes to an issue like that, is it only the food products we're concerned about? The bags without a handle is okay, but you can't have a handle? An easy description for those retail stores, and not just the small ones who are excluded, but we talk about the job opportunity for people. We don't want to see people lose their jobs, at the same time, help reduce the number of bags that are destroying our environment. If you could just give a little easy description, and I know this is ideal, especially with the Z on the front, but what about those other situations we come into? Drugstores, for example. You go and you get some aspirin, you get shaving cream, they give you the plastic bag. That's excluded, that's included. And I know you're the author of it, and I support it. I just want to have some clarification so folks will understand. If I can get Mr. Keretz, the author, Mr. Chair, to Mr. President.
On your time.
Okay. I pressed my button, but I'll just answer it now. I think that's actually an open question. I think what we should do is we should include the CVSs and the Walmarts and others in this as well. Some cities have only limited to grocery stores, some of it have included the Targets and Walmarts, and I think we should go further. And it's actually something that we should have staff here as we're discussing this and include that in the process. There's really no reason to only limit it to supermarkets when a lot of those same products are now sold in other places. And so I think it's a fair point to make sure that when we finalize this, that it's written in that broader way.
Easy language so people can easily understand it.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kerkorian.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, I guess Mr. Keretz already adequately answered Mr. Zine's questions. A lot of these issues of how we actually implement this will be worked out through the exact process that Ms. Perry described, the stakeholder input that we'll be getting over the next 60 days or so. I do want to, first of all, congratulate Mr. Keretz on driving this forward and reiterate his call for urgency on this. Because it's not just a matter of us wrapping up the work that we've been doing here in the council for a number of years. It's also the influence that this body will have on other entities by moving forward with this. And particularly, I'm thinking of the state legislature. Because the real answer to this problem is statewide legislation. We are handicapped right now locally because of statewide preemption in certain areas. For example, one of the options that's not available to us is charging a fee for plastic bags. We only have the option of doing a ban because of statewide preemption. We need to move forward with a statewide ban on plastic bags that's enforceable, that works in every jurisdiction throughout California. And if this city steps forward and does it, within that timeframe that Mr. Keretz has described, I believe that we will, in fact, be leading the state. We will be driving statewide policy. We will encourage our state legislators to finally step up and do what they've gotten to the starting line on a number of times but never quite been able to do. This city's role in pushing the state forward can't be underestimated. And I want to talk a little bit, too, about the manufacturing jobs and so on that have been spoken about. You know, the manufacturers that are here in Southern California who manufacture bags, there may be some job displacement there. And it is something, Mr. Reyes, that I think that we do need to address through the stakeholder process, and we should certainly do that. I see no reason that those same manufacturers can't benefit from the manufacturing of the Z-bag that Mr. Zine held up, and the other durable shopping bags that will be, that there will be a greater demand for once we enact this policy. The problem with plastic bags is a global problem, and it's been recognized as such by countries throughout the world who are banning these bags because of the dramatic negative impact that they're having on our marine environment in particular. But it's not just the bags themselves. It's also the very manufacturing process that we're talking about with these bags. These pellets that I have in this jar, these pre-production plastic pellets, are shipped around the country by the trainload, by the trainload, to plastic manufacturing companies throughout America. And in the process of transporting these pellets, they're very easily spilled, these find their way into our inland waterways, and they're from there into the ocean. And as you can see from them, they're easily mistaken by marine life as eggs. They're very, very difficult to clean up. And so near Midway Island, near Midway Island, in the middle of the Pacific Ocean, you see fish and birds whose guts are filled with this kind of plastic to the point that they starve to death because of our inland manufacturing processes and the fact that we can't get a grip on our plastic trash that we're churning out by the trainload. So the time has really come for action on this. And I'm appreciative of the revisions that Ms. Perry suggested in council today. I think this is going to make for a stronger policy. But by all means, let's move forward, let's take the lead 30 days from now, 60 days from now. Let's bring this back and actually put Los Angeles in a role of global leadership and once and for all, getting a grip on this scourge that's destroying oceans throughout the world.
Thank you. Mr. Englander.
A couple of things. I've been working on this for many years as well, as you know, Mr. Smith. My predecessor was a big advocate in this. In fact, I recently held and brought in Hill to Bay for the Ban the Bag Day. And I want to thank Mrs. Perry's leadership on this as well, and the idea that we would run this concurrently. I support that. And Mr. Reyes, and the idea of looking at, bringing together a task force. I've always been a believer that we shouldn't do this only in the city of L.A. I've always been a believer this should be a statewide ban. I don't believe there's any current pending legislation yet again, for whatever reason. It comes to fruition, and then it dies in committee. Somebody carries it, and then it makes it, doesn't make it out of committee each and every year. I'd like to see a statewide ban. I don't think the county one, I think the county one had some issues. I do have some questions. One, I wanted to make sure that when we do bring this back in 60 days, there's absolutely no way that we're going to be stuck with having to purchase the Z-bags. So I wanted to make sure that that wasn't, just for clarity, because I think those are made in China. We don't want the Z-bags distributed in our district. But the plastic ban, I do support. The single-use bag is an issue and concern of mine because it does have a fiscal impact. It does have an impact on the consumers and the businesses, particularly if they can go to another city in a local jurisdiction. So I wanted to make sure that that single-use ban is not going to be part of this, and I know we're going to look at that. But is that part of the, it's one of the options, is that part of the outreach in the next 60 days? Is the ban of all single-use bags or just the plastic ban? And plastic, and then encouraging and asking and supporting state legislation on a single-use banned bag? Support. Plastics bags, if people come from other jurisdictions. Terrific. City of Los Angeles. Right. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Congressman Englander, next speaker is Congressman Labange.
30 days to get it right. Mr. Reyes, you were eloquent in talking about other people. Our director of sanitation is here. Those components all could be looked at, come back. You know, there was a movie, there's got to be a better way. And a better way is to remove the element that causes the challenge. And the challenge to our communities, if you look at the river, and what Mr. Kerkorian said, is a big challenge. But also, Mr. Englander had points as well. 30 days, and we come back. And we come with a plan to change the face of Los Angeles. And also, members, I have asked that we have a report on the litter enforcement in Los Angeles, because a lot of people litter that shouldn't litter. And if it's not in a trash can, it's in the river. And if it's in the river, it's in the ocean. If it's in the ocean, it's in our fish. So the more we enforce proper litter laws, the less we will have there. You agree with me, Madam City Clerk? Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you, Congressman Labange. Next speaker, Congressman Alarcon. Congressman Alarcon, you're next.
Hold on a second. Sorry. My daughter's running a fever, and my wife and I are trying to figure out who's taking her to the doctor. On this issue, I just wanted to say that I agree with most of my colleagues who have already spoken in terms of, not so much in terms of support, yes, we support it, but in terms of our frustration that this hasn't happened much sooner. The fact of the matter is that this item has been kicking around for many years, and other jurisdictions have been leapfrogging over us in terms of developing policy on this issue. And we should have been the leader on this, and I'm very disappointed about that. In 2009, when Smith and Reyes' motion was moving forward to support state legislation on the ban, I actually inserted an amendment that called on if the state did not pass something, that by 2010, we should do it ourselves. Well, that was almost two years ago. And it's not as if we've lacked information. We have the information. We should just move forward. We should be leaders on this issue, most importantly, because we are adjacent to the ocean, and it just makes sense. So this has been very frustrating. I will support this as soon as we can define the majority and what the majority is going to want. You know, so if we support a total ban, I'll vote for it. If we support a ban on plastic with a 5-cent charge on the paper, I'll support that. But the point is, I think we've overstudied this. We know where our hearts are. We need to move in that direction and move this out as quickly as possible. So whatever the body chooses, my vote is to move forward with the ban.
Mr. Reyes. I just want to emphasize, I do want to see the ban, I do want to see results. I want to see the river cleaned up. I want to eliminate the plastic bags right after the winter rains. We want to eliminate the plastic bags on the beaches. All that's been said. But I just want to know if we are, if we understand the impact of SEQA, and what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. Are we going to be tagging along with the county SEQA process so that we can implement this quickly? Do we have an answer to that question? Or is that something we can answer after the committee report? I can wait for that answer. But I just want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a place where we have to go through a whole other SEQA process because we deviated from what the county has done and requires more time and drags this process out even more. So that's just a question I want to leave out there. I'm hoping, Madam Clerk, we can put that as a question for the committee to be answered in the next report. That is a very critical timing issue, and making sure we move this as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zine. Dennis P. Zine.
I pressed his button, sorry.
Eric Garcetti.
Thanks. I was squatting here in Mr. Zine's chair. I'm glad that we have this before us today, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for bringing it forward to us. Thank you to everybody who was in committee. And thank you especially to the advocacy community who has been tirelessly pushing us forward on this in the right way. It is time. And thank you, Mr. Keretz, for putting forward before us what I think is a very strong proposal, both on paper and plastic, one that I'm comfortable supporting both, though if, you know, strategically people decide that not a fee, but a cost coverage on the paper is necessary, so be it. It's an important step forward. But as Mr. Kerkorian said, this is really about making sure the state steps up so that we have predictability for our grocers, predictability across municipal lines. You know, I was in Washington when Washington enacted its brave ban. A lot of people were going to Virginia, and it was creating chaos. We're a big enough entity that when this happens, this is going to be so important for us all. And it really started with Hill to Bay, Surf Rider, others that are here. But I wanted to just underscore, if I could ask the Bureau of Sanitation to come forward just for a second, Enrique Salivar, and our CLA CAO, just on hitting these deadlines. Because I'm really pleased to see that we will have this, as we said at yesterday's press conference, Mr. Keretz, by March, in order to queue up for the state action, putting the biggest city in the state on the record. But the three things, having the final vote on the ordinance, which we amended to make sure that would happen by March 31st today, in order to meet the deadline, and to, we might need to rely on the county EIR and the Green Cities MEA as much as possible. But also making sure that outreach plan, which Ms. Perry talked about, would be ready within 30 days, as well as a CAO/CLA report, and that, you know, that all that should probably start concurrently. I just want to get on the record whether the CAO/CLA Bureau of Sanitation can get that outreach plan in 30 days, as well as a report, and bring that for us so that we can have a final ordinance by, before us, by March 31st, 2012. Because the best intentions around here oftentimes, not because of any bad work here, but I just want to make sure we're being realistic, what we can do to support you, to make sure you have the resources to do that. I think it's a pretty crystal-clear issue. There's a lot of people have done a lot of work, so we don't have to reinvent this anew. And there are good EIRs already out there. But how are we on the timing? Anybody can jump in. Why don't we start with you, Enrique?
Well, Congressman Garcetti, Enrique Salivar, Director of the Bureau of Sanitation. And you're absolutely right that much work has been done, certainly on the education front. We believe that 60 days is a reasonable time for us to augment what we've already done. Committee has asked us that we do a 30-day update, which, you know, we're going to develop a 60-day plan between now and the start of the year, you know, first week of January. We're going to roll it out, so by the time we go to committee, we will have done some of it, and we will present the update to committee. On your question of the EIR, I think the determination of whether we can piggyback on the L.A. County, we can do that in conjunction with the city attorney fairly soon. If it ends up that the answer is, on your question, Congressman Reyes as well, that it requires a full EIR, then the timeline of 60 days perhaps may end up being short. But if we are able to piggyback on the existing EIR, which we believe we can, then 60 days on the EIR front would be adequate.
How will we make that determination on the EIR? Piggyback?
Karen Koko with the Bureau of Sanitation. Well, first, we would need to understand the policy direction. So are we going to include all single-use bags? Are we going to include just the plastic bags with the store charge on the paper? That makes a difference in the analysis. Also, is there going to be an enforcement program with fines and penalties? That changes not only the fiscal analysis, but also, you know, the analysis about its feasibility, which is a decision point as well.
If we adhere closely to the, or basically replicate the county policy, is your belief the EIR should be adequate?
Well, I'm not an attorney, but my advice was that, the advice that I received was that the city still has to, although there's much environmental analysis that's already been done in these existing EIRs, that the city's scope is different than the scope for these other jurisdictions, so there's still a process to go through, even if we rely on their analysis. But the city has to determine, after the scope is determined, what is the program itself going to be, then the determination of the process, whether it's, it can be a shorter process or not. But for SEQA, there's a specific process you have to go through kind of all the time.
Is our best shot, though, in terms of speed? I mean, to the point, I mean, Mr. Keretz and I, I think, would both support all single-use ban. I know that's what the Bureau initially brought forward. But is our best bet from making that March 31st deadline at this point to give you that direction now? Or does it not slow anything up to, say, 30 days from now? Okay, of these three options, I mean, to go one or the other?
It could, it would, from a timing point of view. The sooner we can proceed in a The sooner we can proceed on a established, or at least a policy statement, then it simplifies whichever we have to do on the environmental side. It will do that, from a timing point of view. If we begin, we can do a sort of more comprehensive environmental on any number of assumptions that will encompass all the options.
Okay, so we can be doing all those simultaneously, same speed? Okay. All right, well, let's get to work on that. CAO/CLA, everybody feel like they can hit the deadlines too?
David Rano with the Office of the CAO. We understand that your request is for a 30-day report back, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, we will do the best that we can.
I want you to have a good holiday, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, thank you. In committee, I testified saying that we thought it would take a little bit longer than that, closer to 60 days. But if it's your will that we do it in 30, we will give it. The good college tried to do so.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Coretts.
Just an answer to my take on Mr. Reyes's question. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I'm hoping that we can adhere as closely as possible to the issues that are already dealt with by the county, many of which, I think, are very much on point and won't change. So I'm hopeful that in the interests of timeliness, that we can use the past environmental work by other entities to our advantage, just to update the things that are obvious differences and move forward in a timely fashion.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosado, would you like to speak? Mr. Bill Rosado.
Sure, why not?
Well, your name's on here, please.
That's right. Good afternoon, everybody. Okay, many of you know, many of you have been involved. For six years, I've been wanting to get this done. And I've been frustrated, frustrated because of this, that, and the other. Now, my hope is this, and I'd like to hear a response from you all, that we can truly meet every issue, every concern we have, and come up with something that Ms. Perry can appreciate from her standpoint, Mr. Coretts. And I'm running out of patience. You know, I'm the coastal district. I got my finger cut once when I went in there with a bunch of environmentalists, and I'll never forget the insanity of that plastic. And we've talked enough, and we have kicked the can down the road, not just a month or two or a year or two, like they're saying. I know for six years since I've been here, I know that Mr. Smith, who I just saw in the room, was talking about it, and so was Mr. Reyes since 2003. So I quickly get a sense of how quickly we can move and can we make that deadline? And do you feel comfortable we need to do all the bureaucratic stuff we need to do and get it done? If I could start with you, please.
Yeah, the 60 days.
Your name for the record again.
Enrique Salivar, Director of the Bureau of Sanitation. 60-day deadline that you are considering. We can come back at the 30-day midpoint and report and finish in 60 days. The only caveat, like we said, and we will make that determination quickly, on the EIR. That's the only caveat that can alter that 60-day.
Okay. Would you comment as well?
Alex, hello, Bureau of Sanitation. I support my boss 100%. We will do it.
Okay, ma'am.
I'm Karen Koko with the Bureau of Sanitation, and I'll actually be doing the work, so you will see me back.
Okay.
I'm David Rano with the Office of the CAO. I think I just answered the question for Mr. Garcetti. Our portion will take approximately 60 days. But if you're asking for it in 30, we'll do everything we possibly can to try and get it back in 30.
Okay, just like I said in my other remarks, I don't want April 1st to be April Fool's Day again for us. I'd like us to have the satisfaction of having accomplished a major issue that affects all of us. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. That is the speaker card. Mr. City Attorney, this is going back to committee. I do have a lot of public comment cards. I know people may want to speak, but if it's going back to committee, what is your advice?
The totality of the amendments on the floor would dictate that the matter has substantially changed since it was in committee, so there should be a limited public hearing today.
Okay, we're going to have a limited public hearing, a one-minute comment. And if you don't need to comment, you can comment in committee when it goes back. Mr. Zine, question?
Mr. Chair, before we get into that, I'd like to just have an introduction to our former colleague, Councilmember Greg Smith, who's in chambers. Councilmember Greg Smith.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Smith, thank you. Over there, Councilmember Greg Smith, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll call off the names and line up, please. Mark Gold, Mark Gold. Here we go, Mark. Christian James, Scott Crawford. Andy Schrader, please line up.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Mark Gold. I'm president of the environmental group Heal the Bay. I'm heartened to see such a wide-ranging support on council to move forward with this ban. I also, on behalf of Heal the Bay and our over 13,000 members, we strongly support the Perry recommendation with the Coretts amendment. I think the key thing here is that you've heard from so many of the councilmembers is, there's got to be accountability at the end of this if we're really going to be able to influence the state legislature. And you have my word, on behalf of Heal the Bay, that there will absolutely, positively be state legislation this year that will be consistent with what we saw going on in the county and Long Beach and so many of the other cities here. We have to do this in a consistent manner, but it will not happen without the city of L.A. domino falling and you guys providing the leadership that I've heard so strongly here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Identify for the record.
Good afternoon, Kirsten James, Water Quality Director with Heal the Bay. I just wanted to briefly touch upon the fun element of all the single-use plastic bag work that we're doing, and that is all of the community outreach that we've done throughout the city of L.A. and beyond. Yesterday, many of you participated in our fifth annual Day Without a Bag. The city has been an extraordinary partner on this event for the last five years. Together, we've given away over 100,000 reusable bags, which is quite commendable. And I know the city has gone well above and beyond that in their reusable bag giveaways. We've also had over 80 giveaway locations throughout the county, making the bags very accessible for our residents. We've also, at Heal the Bay, we do over 500 beach and creek cleanups every year, and we're educating these thousands of beachgoers about the impacts of single-use plastics. We also have our aquarium where we educate over 80,000 visitors a year on this important issue. So the bottom line is, is that we're getting the word out and outreach has been done.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scott Crawford.
Hi, I'm Scott Crawford. I'm on the governing board of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council. 1.6 billion, let me repeat that number, 1.6 billion plastic bags go through Los Angeles every year, polluting our atmosphere, killing our fish, eventually killing our children and our grandchildren. Six months ago, the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council sent you a letter urging you to pass this motion. Again, I'm up here to say, please pass the motion with the quickest speed you can. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, next.
Hi, council, president. Andy Schrader from the Marvesta Community Council Green Committee. I've submitted into the record letters of support from 18 neighborhood councils representing nearly 800,000 people in Los Angeles. That's nearly a quarter of our population, including Midtown North Hollywood, who approved their letter two nights ago. We also need to worry about the forests. There's a precedent for banning both plastic and paper bags. The Carpinteria City Council approved it on Monday night. I encourage you to look into that. To address the economics of a bag ban, I refer you to the L.A. County Staff Report from 2007. The cost to consumers of a supposedly, quote, "free" plastic bag is $18 per year embedded in the cost of their groceries. For paper bags, the hidden cost to consumers is $30. You can buy a considerable number of reusable bags for that same price, so this actually saves consumers money. Some extremely low-income countries and cities have banned plastic bags: Mexico City, China, Delhi, India, Islamabad. It's a simple habit change. It's not the apocalypse. Our businesses and our neighbors will be fine without single-use bags, and most importantly, so will our oceans. Thank you.
Maria Montes, Alicia Diaz, Abad Durante, Letitia Saucedo. One of these names here, Yolanda Fuentes, please come forward. Norma Fierro, very good, thank you very much.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es María Montes.
My name is María Montes.
Y yo trabajo para Crown Poly.
I work for Crown Poly.
Por quince años.
For 15 years.
Bolsas plásticas.
They manufacture plastic bags.
Yo vengo a pedirles, por favor, nos ayuden a conservar nuestros trabajos.
I come to ask you to please help us keep our jobs.
A mí, a todos mis compañeros.
For me and all my coworkers.
Mi compañía es una buena compañía.
The company I work for is a good company.
Tiene muy buenos beneficios.
They have very good benefits.
Aparte de eso, mi familia es muy grande.
I have a large family in addition to that.
Dependen mucho de mí.
And they depend on me.
Ustedes pueden ayudarnos.
Can you help us?
Tienen el poder en sus manos.
You have the power in your hands.
Y yo les pido que tomen la mejor decisión.
I ask you to please.
Para nosotros, los trabajadores.
The best decision for us, the workers.
Y les doy las gracias y que pasen una feliz Navidad y un año nuevo.
I thank you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Es todo, gracias.
And that's all, thank you.
And for the record, your name?
Su nombre es María Montes.
Thank you, Ms. Montes. Next.
Hello, my name is Alicia Ortiz. I work for Crown Poly. I ask for, please, think of us as an employer, as a human being. I'm a single mother. My kids depend on my income, and Crown Poly provides that income for me, health insurance for my kids. I know that you think about the environment for the plastic bags, but you also need to, please, think of us as well, as an employer, not just myself and not just the company of Crown Poly, but all the companies that manufacture in plastic bags. My kids depend on me. They have, one of them needs insurance for vision, and Crown Poly provides that insurance for my family, as well as for me. And I ask for, please, to think of all the employees that are in Crown Poly. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Letitia Saucedo.
Good afternoon, my name is Letitia Saucedo.
Yo trabajo para Crown Poly hace seis años.
I've been working for Crown Poly for six years.
En el departamento de t-shirt.
T-shirt department.
Yo les vengo pidiendo, por favor, que nos ayuden a conservar nuestro trabajo.
I ask you to please help us keep our jobs.
Todos se preocupan por salvar la bahía, pero no se preocupan en nuestro trabajo, en nuestra familia.
Everybody is concerned to save the bay, but they don't worry about our families and our jobs.
Somos muchos trabajadores.
We are so many workers.
Han pensado qué va a pasar con nosotros.
Have you think what is going to happen with us?
Qué vamos a hacer?
What are we going to do?
Ha aumentado la pobreza en nuestro país.
The poorness has increased in our country.
Han pensado qué vamos a hacer, todos nosotros, si nos quedamos sin trabajo.
Did you think what are we going to do if we lose our jobs?
Sé que todos van a tomar la mejor decisión, pero piensen, piensen que hay muchas personas que dependemos de ese trabajo.
I know that all of you are going to take the best decision, but just think, think how many people depend on those jobs.
Nuestra compañía nos ofrece excelentes beneficios.
Our company is offering us excellent benefits.
No dependemos del gobierno.
We don't depend from the government.
Dependemos de nuestro trabajo.
We depend of our jobs.
Nuestros compañeros pudieron venir, pero no, este, no, no cabemos nada, ¿saben? Tenemos, este, le pedimos también por todos nuestros compañeros, que no pudieron venir.
We are also requesting this for all our coworkers that were not able to come.
Por favor, piensen, piensen, gracias.
Think about this.
Su nombre?
Letitia Saucedo.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es María Yolanda Puentes.
My name is María Yolanda Puentes.
Yo vengo a pedirles, por favor, que no cieren las compañías, las fábricas de plástico.
I come to please ask you, no, okay, no cierren?
Sí.
Or not to close the plastic manufacturing companies?
Porque nuestro trabajo, yo tengo unos hijos que están yendo a la universidad, trabajan part-time, y pues realmente yo no, o sea, no me pueden ayudar con los gastos de mi casa.
Because I have children that are going to the university, they are working part-time, and they cannot help with expenses at home.
Ustedes bien saben que los libros son muy caros de la universidad.
You know that the university books are very expensive.
Los pagos de cada mes que tienen que estar dando.
Yeah, the payments that they have to do every month.
Mi esposo ha metido aplicaciones por muchas compañías y siempre le dicen que le van a hablar, o...
My husband applied to so many companies, and they always tell him that they will call him back.
El otro está agarrando desempleo.
Right now, he's getting unemployment.
Están diciendo que les quiere quitar el desempleo a los que están, a los desempleados.
But they also mentioned that they want to just stop the unemployment to the unemployed.
Se lo van a quitar y qué vamos a hacer nosotros.
So if he doesn't get unemployment, what are we going to do to pay the rent?
A todos les hace fácil decir, hay que quitar las bolsas de plástico.
For everybody, it's so easy to say, let's ban the plastic bags.
Sí, pues no es justo que todos tienen su buen trabajo y nosotros vamos a perder el de nosotros.
Yeah, it's not fair for everybody else to have a good job and for us to lose our job.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias y, por favor, piensen en nosotros.
Think about us, please.
Next speaker.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Norma Fierro.
Good afternoon, my name is Norma Fierro.
Y aquí yo también estoy apoyando mi trabajo. Yo trabajo en el departamento de bolsas de, que ustedes, que está en el proposal para quitarse.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here to support my job. I also work at the department where they manufacture the bags that you want to ban.
Así que, por favor, les ruego que no, que no pase eso, porque todos dependemos nuestro trabajo.
I beg you not to approve it, because we all depend on our jobs.
No solamente, porque casi la mayoría que estamos en ese trabajo somos casi madres solteras.
The majority of us at that job, we are single parents, single mothers.
Algunas están enfermas, dependemos de la seguridad que nos provee el trabajo.
Some are sick and they depend on the insurance provided by the company.
Así que, por favor, les ruego que voten no en la proposal.
I beg you to vote against the proposal.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias, sir.
Buenas tardes, tengan todos ustedes.
Good afternoon to all of you.
Soy empleado de Crown Poly, tengo 11 años.
I worked 11 years at Crown Poly.
Ahorita estamos en una tasa de desempleo muy grande.
At this moment, we have a high percentage of unemployment.
Qué va a pasar si cierran las compañías de plástico?
What is going to happen if they close the plastic manufacturing companies?
Quieren mandar las compañías de plástico a otros países para ser los más ricos y nuestros, Los Ángeles más pobres.
Do you want to send this company to another countries for them to become richer and for Los Angeles to become poorer?
Todas las gentes, vemos la televisión, la noticias en español, en inglés, hay un hombre que mata a su hijo de cuatro meses, de 11 años, de 12 años.
We all see the news.
Porque no tiene trabajo, para pagar la casa, para pagar los billes, para pagar carros.
We all see the news in English and Spanish, and we see that men kill their children that are four years, 11 years, and because they don't have jobs to pay the house, to pay for the cars, and to pay for their expenses.
Mucha gente va a meter aplicaciones a las agencias y dicen llama todos los días para ver si hay trabajo, y no te dan trabajo.
Many people is going to agencies to apply for a job, and they ask them to call back every day, and you call back every day, and they tell you that there are no jobs.
Crown Poly tiene 250, 260 empleados, y ahorita acaba de emplear a 15 personas en estos dos meses más.
Yeah, Crown Poly has between 250 to 60 employers, and right now, they have hired 15 more people in the last two months.
Crown Poly es una gran compañía, y por favor, consideren la ley que no pase para que sigan manteniendo a sus familias los empleados.
Crown Poly is a great company. Please consider not approve this law for the employers, for the workers to be able to support their families.
Gracias, feliz Navidad para todos.
Merry Christmas to all of you.
Su nombre?[1732.11]
Abad Dorantes.
Hi, good afternoon, sir. My name is Ovar Muñoz, and I work at Crown Poly. I worked there for three years, and so far it's been so good for me, because I've been able to provide for my daughter, because I'm a single parent, and she suffers from epilepsy. So working at Crown Poly has been making me possible to provide for her the medication that she needs. Now, if you close the companies that make plastic bags, you're not only, uh, unemployed, putting a lot of people on unemployment, but you're also making me lose money that I, that I earned to pay for my daughter's medication. Please consider the amendment that you, that you're voting on, and, and think about us. Thanks.
Thank you. David Simhays, Arnold Sachs, Sarah Sheehy, Elisa Dory.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Simhai. I'm the vice president of research and development at Crown Poly. As you've heard, we manufacture plastic grocery bags here in L.A. County with close to 300 employees. I oppose this ordinance, but support Jan Perry and the committee's recommendation to move forward with stakeholder input process. I am proud to have an opportunity to work at a clean factory here in Los Angeles. To Councilmember Englander's point, the majority of reusable bags are made in China, and they are made with high amounts of lead. We have an entrepreneurial owner who built this clean factory here in L.A., not in China. I am also extremely proud of all the employees that we provide for with good wages, excellent health, dental vision benefits, and 401Ks, some of which you have just heard from. Your original comprehensive approach to the deal with all single-use bags fairly is appreciated, but product bans are not the answer. The economy has weakened. Please keep us in mind.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes has a quick question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Given your capacity to produce these products, do you also have the capacity to change the type of product that is consistent with the policy direction so that you don't have to let workers go, but shift your product line? Is that possible?
With the machinery that we have, it is not possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Next speaker.
Good afternoon and thank you. My name is Alyssa Dory, and I'm an environmental sociology student. Uh, first, I would like to address that while I support the ban, I want us to look for a solution that is beyond canvas bags. It's about changing consumer behavior and looking at alternative options while keeping people educated about what they can do. Cotton is extremely hard for the environment to handle, and commercial agriculture is one of the biggest offenders to our environment. The solution is creating and finding local producers, whether it is people growing cotton locally or people who manufacture the canvas bags locally. My concern is that with the ban, that we're going to immediately outsource production for these bags and continue to not support sustainable agriculture. I think that we should identify sources to manufacture bags with locally and to look for alternative options, whether it is sustainable cotton that's grown organically. Uh, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Manuela Milano, after Mr. Sachs, I think Manuela, okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Ninety-six months from 2004, not counting 2003, to 2011, ninety-six months, you've been working on this supposed ban, a program. So I'm struck with how you expect to hit the finish line in three months, when you have questions regarding CEQA, when you have the CAO and the CLA having to come up with reports, when you don't even know what bags you're actually talking about. Ninety-six months, you have single-use bags, we have the bags from the grocery store, we have the bags for the fruit and salad, we have bags from Kmart that are different plastic bags, we have bags from other retailers that are different plastic bags than the ones with the handle, you have the big, huge plastic bags, you have the small plastic bag. Ninety-six months, and you're going to get it done in three months? I'm a little leery unless you already have these answers to these questions and you're just pulling somebody's legs. Ninety-six months you've been working on it.
Okay, Josh Javier, is that correct? The next set of cards from CalPurd. Come on up. David Mittelstein, Ann Bradley, Graham Hamilton, Sarah Sheehy, if again.
Uh, thank you, everybody. My name is Josh Joyner. I'm a student at USC with CalPurd. We're a student-funded, student-run public interest group, and I'm also a resident of Los Angeles District Number Nine. Uh, me and my cohort recently presented 4,700 petitions signed by fellow students and L.A. residents to the Energy and Environment Committee a few hours ago in support of the L.A. bag ban. The urgency for this bag ban has never been greater than it has now. With Californians alone using over 12 billion plastic bags annually and recycling less than 5% of these plastic bags, the Pacific Garbage Patch is rapidly expanding and is currently larger than the state of Texas. Some speculate even twice its size, and it's killing millions of animals and birds and marine life every year that fly into it. Apart from that, plastic bags have already been proven to be super-toxic to wildlife, and after blowing around our city, they accumulate five to 10 times their original toxicity before they find their homes in our storm drains and ultimately in our oceans. So I'm hoping that these petitions and facts presented from me and my fellow residents in L.A. help open the council's eyes to the urgency needed with the Los Angeles bag ban. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, President. Uh, my name is David Mittelstein. I'm also a member of CalPurd. I'm the chapter chair. About, about two or three hours ago, I had the honor to present 4,600 petitions to the Energy, the Environment and Energy Committee. Six boxes like this of people who care enough about these issues, they actually care to sign a petition to ban plastic bags in the L.A. area. I heard from people from a wa, with a variety of opinions about this, people who were proud that California was going to be leading the way in environmentalism, people who were tired of seeing plastic bags and detritus on our beaches in California, people who, um, were, were concerned about the ecologic, economic impact of, um, government being involved in cleaning up the beaches. And I just wanted to, um, state on behalf of these 4,600, um, 4,600 people, thank you very much for all of your, um, continued effort to pass this ban, and we hope that these next, uh, three to six months, um, actually see a solution in banning plastic bags in Cal, in Los Angeles and hopefully banning plastic bags to spread us statewide. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ann Bradley.
Ann Bradley, uh, of Council, uh, District Four. Uh, these are two bags that the City of Los Angeles gave me for free. I wash them. They're perfect. They'll last forever. The fact of the matter is, I, like my council member, LeBange, was born in 1953, and I've had to make a lot of changes in my life. When I entered city service in 1979, there were no fax machines, ladies and gentlemen, there were no computers. It took me a lot of effort and work to learn those new kinds of ways of working. Nobody is going to lose their job. The fact of the matter is, all of us have had to do different things in order to stay full front in the workforce. And that, all the information points to the fact that the green economy will create even more jobs. I am not without compassion for anybody that has to learn a new way of working. I did. When I had to learn a computer in 1988, it took me a lot of, of effort. It was not easy for me. I was using an IBM Selectric typewriter with correctable ink in the seventies, and I, that's what I learned, that's what I grew up on. The fact is, we can change.
Thank you very much, Ann.
Everybody can keep their jobs.
Thank you very much, Ann.
Hello, my name is Graham Hamilton, and I'm here on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation. The last thing that I want to do is take away someone's job, but the suggestion that banning plastic bags will destroy jobs seems like a fear tactic that's being employed during tough economic times. Research suggests that companies that manufacture plastic bags produce a multitude of plastic products, and to say that this initiative will kill jobs is like saying the folks who mix paint for a living are going to lose their jobs if we decide to outlaw MOW. In a world of heightened economic consciousness, uh, environ consciousness, it's easy to feel overwhelmed and cynicism can be awfully seductive, but the truth is, the earth and her oceans will be just fine regardless of how we proceed. The fact that over 200,000 marine mammals die each year suffocating on plastic points not only to an environmental tragedy and the human waste and carelessness that brought it about, but it also points to the subtle destruction of our own species. If the oceans choke on a sea of our plastic, we won't be far behind. It's unacceptable that something like a plastic bag, which gets used for a day or week or a month.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Walsh, if you take your mask off for a moment and put, get yourself up there carefully, let us see your eyes first and then put it back on. Thank you very much.
I'm 100% for the ban, but I heard that all the plastic bags are from China. We'll take a look at this one, made in China. The cloth is too. As far as you greenies here, this is Blue Shield of California. So maybe you should go to Blue Shield of California, you people who make a fortune out of green.
Mr. Walsh, please speak to the chair. Thank you.
Maybe they should go to Califor, to the Blue Cross of Ca, Shield of California and ask them to make these bags, these, these cloth bags here. And as far as plastics, yes. Take the plastics, I would suggest going from plastic bags of that kind to condoms. And we had a discussion recently, and you're going to be promoting condoms, and everyone will be happy. This is what cloth is the future. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you very much. Uh, last cards that I do have, I called just to make sure that they're not here, at this issue here. Adrian Martinez, Sarah Sheehy, Graham Hamilton, uh, Ms. Dory, and Ms. Fuentes. Identify yourselves, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Adrian Martinez, and I'm here on behalf of the Natural Resources Defense Council and our 1.3 million members and activists. As was said earlier, this is a local issue because plastic bags are all in our rivers, but it's also a national and international issue because of its, uh, these, the impact on marine ecosystems. Uh, we need to stop listening to the American Chemical Council, and we need to start thinking about ourselves and the future of our children in Los Angeles. We need to move quickly to ban, uh, plastic bags, and I'm confident that the Bureau of Sanitation, which is very capable, dedicated, and visionary, will be able to meet the deadlines that have been requested by various council members. NRDC encourages, uh, the council to move very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That completes the cards. Uh, Ms. Perry, I'm going to call on you as the chair this time, and Madam Clerk, these are the cards for the record. Thank you so much. Thank all the public testimony, uh, that was given at this time. The councilwoman of the committee, Councilwoman of the great night, Jan Perry.
No, yeah, is it okay? Yeah. Uh, thank you, thank you again, Mr. Chair. As I said earlier, uh, we did have this in committee. Uh, C, CAO and, and sanitation, uh, are coming back in 30 days with their 60-day plan. I amended it verbally on the floor to also include a strategy that would encompass working with retailers on recycling plastic bags for people who come in from other cities and other jurisdictions, and they still have plastic bags, so that we can continue to work on a continuum of solutions, uh, to this problem. And I appreciate, uh, staff work, and I know that it's a tight timeline, but I do think we need to move it along, and we have the momentum. So let's keep it going, and appreciate all your hard work. So with that, uh, if there are no further comments, it is still in committee, and, uh, we'll finish it there and then bring it back, and it should move rather expeditiously.
Very good, Ms. Perry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that's okay with you?
Um, Mr. President, council, um, should vote on the educate, the Energy and Environment Committee report as amended, along with the other amendments that were, uh, amended motions that were made in council.
All right, thank you very much. So, uh, we were going to open the roll on this issue then. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, we order that back to committee, and we go forward. All right, 11, please. Item number 11, let's pull it out of order. Item 11, thank you all. Have a good weekend. Thank you, Bureau of Sanitation, and, uh, Mr. Sandoval Enrique, thank you for yesterday. Item number 11, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
But the clerk's going to read it. Hold on, Mr. Rosedal, one moment, please.
Item number 11 is a motion, rules in all LeBange relative to a memorandum of understanding regarding between Caltrans and various city agencies.
Mr. Rosedal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we ask, uh, quickly, Bureau of Street Services, Ron Olive, to come up, and Ken Hustings, who are the Department of Transportation? Uh, this is basically for our constituents who watch this show, that the Sepulveda Tunnel, as you know, is a major artery of travel. Forty percent of those who use it are going to LAX at that point. Some of you might remember that there was a problem there not too long ago, and they couldn't get through the tunnel. Well, good news is this. Betsy Butler, an assembly member, and myself sat down, we brought Caltrans, we brought everybody from our city together, and the challenge was just to get all the bureaucrats on the same wavelength. Instead of pointing fingers at each other, they could point it at themselves. And we could, as a group, come up with a memorandum of understanding that would finally address a very serious issue for people. We're getting into the holidays again, and it's one of those issues. So I'd like to have you guys give us the good news of where we are and what we're actually doing together in a coordinated effort so that we can go forward and feel comfortable we're doing the right thing in the tunnel. So a quick update.
Real briefly, what I'll, Ken Hustings with L.A. DOT. Real briefly, we do have a delegated maintenance agreement between the city and Caltrans with understanding of what are the responsibilities and roles for each agency when it comes to maintaining the tunnel as well as other state highways. Now, we have sat down with Caltrans as well as the Bureau of Street Services, and we're now trying to engage LAWA on trying to be a little bit more proactive as far as, uh, contributing, because LAWA has requested additional maintenance to the tunnel above and beyond what's currently being provided. And so we're trying to engage them with, um, possible solutions, for instance, giving Bureau of Street Services more money, or even entering into a separate agreement between LAWA as well as, uh, Caltrans so that they can provide that additional maintenance. Now, with this specific instance, I know that, um, there has been a, a discussion to have an MOU, and I think with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to Bureau of Street Services, who was actually a part of that discussion.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Councilman. Ron Olive, Assistant Director, Bureau of Street Services. Um, on that Sunday, November 20th, what happened there is, um, the first time to our recollection that we've had that problem where both pumps had failed, both some pumps had failed. We had, um, both pumps are operated through, uh, separate starter switches, and, uh, both failed at the same time. We're not 100% certain, but we think it was some kind of power surge. But again, we've never had it where both pumps, uh, failed at the same time. Um, we had some communication issues that day, um, and, and there was some confusion on who was responsible for what, and that's, the good news is, the very next morning, um, 50 folks met in a, in a room for hours, um, all the public safety agencies, Caltrans, ourselves, and Public Works, um, DOT, and we've come up with a protocol led by LAWA now that we're very clear 100% on who's to do what, emergency phone numbers, home numbers have been exchanged. Um, so we will not have the communication challenges we had last time. We've also, uh, purchased spare parts for the pumps and the starter switches. So, uh, once we're notified, we should, it should be able to fix the problem within a couple hours. Again, once we're notified, um, it should not become a flooding problem there, even if we do.
Very good.
Another failure in the pumps.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and great for the holidays, and now everybody's got each other's phone numbers. If an issue happens, we'll do it. We'll get the right lighting in there. We'll, we'll clean up that place, and we can all be very happy. I look forward to that memorandum where everybody doesn't go like this anymore, but they go like this, and they assume that responsibility. Thank you for your hard work on it, and it's for you folks out there. Hopefully, this will not be a problem for us anymore, and that's Sepulveda Tunnel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosedal. Madam Clerk, was it a receiving file?
Susan, Mr. President, um, the committee report for this item has not been circulated yet, so, um, council, uh, would like to hold this item on the desk until that report has been circulated.
Very good. That's a good idea. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item will be special one, special one. Mr. Garcetti, special one, and Madam Clerk.
The city attorney will speak to the findings for special one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, the CRA board took action regarding the Hollywood Freeway Central Park MOU. There is an immediate need to act on the matter before the council recess, as this is the last council meeting before January 3rd. Council must make findings first pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Just on the findings, uh, yes, this was, um, I think, folks know most CRA activities had been frozen and are frozen right now while the state, uh, um, legal proceedings get resolved. Uh, but the CRA board did take action, excuse me, yesterday. We found out about it. Um, we have the opportunity to move forward today on money for an environmental impact report for the Hollywood Freeway Cat Park. So just on the findings, I want to say, we found out about that yesterday. We said we'd put this in as a Rule 23 today so we get this done before the coming year, and so, um, I ask for your support on the findings, please.
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue. So we're going to vote on this issue right now, on the findings, on the findings. Open the roll. All right, it's on the findings, Mr. Walsh. Please be seated. We'll get you in a minute. On the findings, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
On the substance, you need to calm down, Mr. Walsh. On the substances is when you speak. That is just on the findings or whether under Rule 23.
Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Garcetti, let's go.
We have speakers here who will be speaking on this now on the substance of this issue now that we have under Rule 23 taken the vote on whether or not to take up this issue at all. Uh, colleagues, this is a very exciting day. We have before us something that we have been working on in the Hollywood community now for a number of years, brought to me by everyday residents of the Hollywood community and stakeholders who came forward with the idea that it was an opportunity for us, just as folks had looked at and have looked at downtown. as folks had looked at and have looked at downtown, at looking at how do we create more green space for our residents in Los Angeles when land is so hard to find. In the 13th Council District, we had 13 parks 10 years ago, and we recently opened up our 38th park. So we've been hustling to find small plots of land, to build long reservoirs and other places, new green spaces for people to be able to go within walking distance to their homes, to places that will provide them with healthier and better lives. The most dramatic of these that we have ever proposed, and one which has brought together an incredible coalition of residents, business folks, of people who are in Hollywood and have been stakeholders for a long time across political lines, people who often disagree with one another, this has been a unifying element to literally, physically unify our neighborhood, where the 101 freeway goes below grade, and to create a 44-acre park that would bring back the neighborhood together and come off of essentially the Walk of Fame, and provide a central park for Hollywood. There are over 100 cap parks around the country that take advantage of highways when they're below grade. There's one just up the freeway at the end of the two in La Cuenada, in which we are, or La Crescenta, I think, La Cuenada, where we're able to show that we can create real estate literally out of thin air, but in a way that will be a legacy for all of us to have families, to have folks who are performing, to have folks who are playing, to have folks who are living more healthily, and to, at the same time, help us improve the traffic situation on the 101. The environmental impact report, though, is an important, critical step in this. And today, with this action, concurring with what the CRA stepped forward and provided funds to do, we would be able to move forward with the all-important environmental impact report. We have speakers who are here from the coalition of folks who have really made this happen. I want to thank them, or at least people in the audience, whether they want to speak or not. We appreciate the incredible hard work they've put in volunteering their time, and I ask for your support. This is the kind of template that can be done up here, as Mr. Weezer has looked at, I know, to unify our civic center with El Pueblo. It could be done, where the 10 freeway around Crenshaw is below grade, to provide a multi-acre park in South Los Angeles, but we're going to show how to get it done. I want to thank the neighborhood councils, the business associations, and the entire board of the cap park organization for their incredible work, especially Lori Goldman, who has just been an angel on this entire project. They've been in Washington, DC to bring this to the attention of our legislators and the White House. We're looking forward to being in DC, and I think, meeting with Ray LaHood soon on this very project, and I ask for your support today, as we do the important environmental work, to make this dream become a reality.
Thank you. We have two comment cards. Mr. Arnold Sachs, Mr. John Walsh. City Attorney requires a two-minute comment. If you can do it in one, fine. Mr. Walsh, first.
First of all, under the, there's no necessity for an emergency exemption. You are overusing this. You know, since you almost arrested an attorney, Noah Weiss, a little earlier on the First Amendment, I would expect you're going to be getting a lawsuit on this. Second of all, under the law, it isn't agendized, it isn't here, and there's no copy. I saw the copies handed out here, even at the MTA, the public is given a copy. Next, I cannot believe that when Eric had his speech up there, and it's on tape, go back and look at it, he says, "In LA, when I'm chair, I'm president, any member of the public can come up and yell at me." So actually, when I yelled at him, he had two cops threaten to arrest me. That's the phoniness of Eric Garcetti. And incidentally...
Please direct your comments to me.
I'm going to sit down. Thank you for a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Arnold Sachs. Have a nice weekend.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. The reason I held this, and the reason I questioned the redevelopment, you have on your agenda, item number two, which, and you prefaced item number two with the court case that's facing the state, and item number 26, which refers to AB 1290 funds, which I understand are redevelopment, for redevelopment, money for redevelopment projects. So why would there be an emergency hearing? Why couldn't you use AB 1290 funds for this redevelopment project, for this, this important item that needed to have an emergency hearing? That's my question. What is the significance of the difference between, when you, when you preface items on your agenda with the facts regarding the court case that the state is in, and you preface them with the item 1290?
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue. Mr. Garcetti, want to recognize again and ask the Hollywood people to stand up?
I think you just did. Would you guys stand up?
Thank you very much. Stand up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, no other speakers. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Very much. Fourth with all that item. Next item, all items to go forth with. Item number two, please. Madam Clerk.
Item number two is Housing Committee and Economic Development Committee Report and Joint Resolution Relative to a Loan Agreement with Meta Housing Corporation.
Thank you very much. No speakers on the queue.
I believe there's cards for council.
Yes. Arnold Sachs, John Walsh. Pass for Mr. Sachs. I'm going to rule a one-minute public comment on this. One minute. And if you need two, take it.
Don't worry. Oh, it fell. There's nothing I can't accomplish in 60 seconds. Ask anybody. HollywoodHighlands.org, go to our Facebook. Again, something's being slipped through. It concerns housing. Housing Authority, corporate, Housing Authority, Hackla, a group that's under FBI investigation? It's not about me, it's not about we, it's about FBI. Why the hurry for something that won't be built for another 10 years? Hackla, under FBI investigation. You know what you can do with the rest of my expired time?
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So ordered. Next item, please.
Mr. President, the Transportation Committee report for item number 11 has been circulated. Council may vote on that item now, if you wish.
All right. I'd like to take your advice. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's open the roll on that. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes. Very good. Next item, please.
Item number 14, called special by Councilmember Alarcon. The amended motion has been circulated, and I believe that item can be voted on.
Mr. Alarcon? You have called the special, item 14? And we do have one public comment, Cole.
I wanted to insert an amendment. Was it introduced? Okay, there's an amendment that I introduced, it was to be circulated. I believe it's been circulated. I asked that we... Can I get a second on that amendment? Actually, it was seconded. We circulated.
It's already been seconded and circulated. I'd like to ask, could I go to call on Mr. Walsh for comment, if you would? Wave the comment. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. So the matter's been circulated? 14A.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. 14A.
It's 14A?
Could I lay that on the desk, or are you ready to bring it forward? I'm going to lay it on the desk, lay it on the desk for a moment. We're going to go to the next item. Lay 14 on the desk. 16, please. Item 16.
Councilmembers, I apologize.
Richard? Do you have it?
I just wanted to explain, the purpose of the amendment, we had a, in, in a committee meeting, we discussed a variety of food policy with a multitude of advocates on a lot of different levels. The, we, we sent it out of committee with, without specificity, directing the CLA to come back and incorporate all of the comments of the various advocates that were, were present. They, they provided, so they've come back with that, that report, and in that report, it, it captures the conversation that we had in my committee. My amendment would, would solidify those, those comments and place them into a resolution on food policy.
That being said, members, are we prepared to vote on this? There's no speakers on the queue? Excuse me? Are we ready to vote? Mr. Kocori, are you all right? Okay, there's no speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 16, call special for cards.
Mr., Mr. Arnold Sachs. One minute, Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon again, Arnold Sachs. Two things about this. It's December 16th, last meeting of the year. You're approving funding for the calendar year 2011. What if you didn't pay? What if you didn't approve it? Who would get the bill? Which brings me back to point number two. Who is paying this bill? You're approving, concurring with the board action of the DWP? Well, I'm reminded of the, the board action regarding the company to do it, an assessment on the rate increase. You increased the amount of the contract, but the DWP isn't paying for the contract. The city is paying for the contract. So who exactly is paying for this membership? Is it a city membership that's being paid, or is it the DWP paying the bill? Because it's only, after all, $350,000. And shouldn't you be addressing the 2012 calendar year? Because it is January, two weeks.
Thank you very much. No speakers on the queue. I don't see it, Mr. Walsh. We have no card for this one, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 17, call special for cards.
Good. Dr. Williams had it for a card from Neighborhood Council 32 LA. No Dr. Williams. No speakers in the queue. I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, please. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much. Item, next item.
Item 19, call special for cards.
Special card by Mr. John Walsh of Hollywood, California.
I just want the clerk to be on notice that I demand a signed note for every card I hand in that you received. I will give you the form for it, because cards disappear. HollywoodHighland.org, and as far as number 19 is concerned, I don't have to get up here on every issue. I wouldn't have gotten up on, on this issue, and I would have waived it if I'd been allowed to speak. But from now on, I will ask for receipt...
Mr. President, he's not talking about this final matter.
No, no, please don't say that, Mr. Walsh. That's a, you're one warning right there. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other items? No speakers on the queue? Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 23, call special for an amended motion, which has been circulated.
Been circulated. We have one card for Mr. Arnold Sachs. Mr. Sachs, you want to pass? All right, please jog up here.
So, is, are they here? Because I got to go too soon.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon again, Arnold Sachs. Item 23 refers to a citywide initiative, Streets for the People. You already have a citywide initiative, Streets for the People. They're called the homeless, or the ones parking in their, their vehicles because they can't afford rent. Are you expanding that program to allow more people on the streets, or to park on the streets? So answer, address that problem before you address another city initiative.
Thank you. That'll close our public comment on that item. Anybody wishing to be heard on item 23? Want to thank the good work of the City Planning Commission on this, and Mr. Weezer has substitute motion that we have in as well, without objection, except, with that, let's go ahead and open the roll on substitute motion on 23, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that would take council to a special meeting. Would you like to recess the regular meeting?
Yes. On 19, that's still special? Do we want to take up 19 first? Are we waiting a report or something? Should we take 19?
We voted on 19.
Okay, let's, let's take up item 19, then. Let's see, I think that was called special for a card. I do not see a card on 19.
Yes, we, we heard public comment on number 19.
Oh, we did hear. Sorry.
Yes, we voted.
Okay, we did. Sorry. It was still up there, so I wasn't sure. All right, let's go ahead and call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alarcon Carden, Ms. Englander, Weezer, Corresco, Correa, LeBange, Parks, Prey, Reyes, Rosedal, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, Timmer is present in a quorum, Mr. President.
All right. First order of business, please.
Items 24 through 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
All right, if there's no objection to consideration, those are before us. We have public hearings on those, or did we have public hearings already?
Public comment would need to be heard for those items. There are cards on items 24, 26, and 28.
All right, we'll close the other items. Any specials besides those, 25, 27, and 29? Any specials? If not, let's take up those three items. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Take up item 24. Like to recognize Mr. Zine. Oh, no, sorry, Mr. Corres. On number 20. This went through the, this was an appointment that I made, but it went through audits, or it was waived through audits, so...
I'm the audit chair.
Is Mr. Correa here?
I'm standing up for him.
All right. Mr. Zine, I'll recognize you.
As the audit chair and a member of my community, Freddie Correa, who is currently Assistant Planner at the City of Moore Park, and he's a member of the community of the San Fernando Valley in my district. This is for a reappointment to the Quality and Productivity Commission. In April 2011, we approved him. This will then give him a full term on the Quality and Productivity Commission. His resume and biography have been distributed to all my colleagues, and I ask that we, again, appoint him for this full term, request an eye vote. Due to his work schedule, he's unable to be here today, so I would, again, request that we give him an eye vote and a full term on the Quality and Productivity Commission. A wonderful member of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, let's take the card from the public on this. Item 24. See here? Arnold Sachs, you want to come forth?
Yes, thank you, Arnold Sachs. It's too bad that the commissioner could not be here, because I'd have a suggestion for him that would actually increase quality and productivity for the city. You could, A and B, do like they, if you're familiar with the book Catch 22, there's a portion in there where they're discussing scheduling parades that they're trying to outdo each other, and then they get to the portion where they're canceling the parades that aren't even scheduled. And the reason I bring that up is because you have nominated, or renominated, a councilman to sit on the Gold Line Construction Authority after he sat on the construction authority that wasn't even legalized by the state action. So maybe if you had people who didn't go to meetings, or didn't have organizations, or didn't have commissions, you could get more done. Just don't go. Just don't go. Just don't do it. We see how resourceful it is with these other... With the Gold Line Construction Authority. Didn't exist? That's all right. Got a paycheck? Didn't exist. It's only money.
Mr. President, he isn't talking about the Quality and Productivity Commission.
Get more productivity, Mr. Attorney.
It's not just the same word, sir. It's the commission specifically, if you can address that.
I'm addressing how you could increase productivity or suggesting for the Commissioner, but he's not here to hear it. So you could get more productivity if you just went ahead and did stuff without creating the commissions, or having a legal standing for those commissions.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Walsh.
Scared, I'm under warning. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Visit Mickey's Pointed View, or Walsh Confidential, or Facebook, or Twitter. And as far as this gentleman is concerned, I've heard anything... Nothing but good comments about him, and I think you might as well reaffirm him, reappoint him. There's absolutely no evidence that he watches kiddie porn on videos at home the way one of your other appointments to another commission did. We did... Would like to ask him, and we would like to ask the committee, for the top 10 accomplishments of this Quality and Productivity Commission, you'd be hard-pressed to come up with one or two. If there is an organ... If there is a commission that does nothing, if there is a do-nothing commission, and the one... It's the Rodney Dangerfield. It gets no respect, and it deserves no respect. It's a hidden commission that no one cares about, the Efficiency Commission. I leave it at the Efficiency Committee. HollywoodHighlands.org.
That closes our public comment. Let's take a vote on this item. Prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next is item 26... Sorry, 26, yes, called special for cards as well. Mr. Walsh, would you like to come forward on item 26?
Wave.
All right, Mr. Walsh waves. And Mr. Sacks, would you like to come forward on 26? Okay. We'll go ahead and prepare the roll, then we'll close the public hearing on that. And please tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next is 28. Mr. Walsh, would you like to come forward on item 28?
Wave.
Okay. Mr. Walsh waves his card. That will close the public hearing. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on number 28, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And if we can now exit this special meeting, and please call the roll for the second special meeting.
Alarcon Cardenas, England, and Weezer Caress, according, La Bange Parks, Prairie Reyes, Rosendahl, Weston, Zion Garcia, Timmer is present in a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, we have one item, item 30, and that has not had a public hearing. We have two cards. Mr. Sacks, would you like to come forward on item number 30?
Yes, thank you again. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. As with the economic zones that you create, and these empowerment zones you create, the devil's in the details. We hear a lot about some of these zones where companies get incentives for new hires, but that doesn't mean they're actually creating more jobs. They could be recycling jobs, and each one of those recycled positions becomes a new hire, which allows them to get the incentive, but does not increase employment. To be sure, if you want to create these empowerment zones, it's come along with a caveat that employment needs to be increased. Because otherwise, public money is being spent for a private company to get the benefit, and there's no real benefit to the public that equates out to having new jobs. If they recycle the same 10 positions after a year, what you have is continual unemployment, but no new source of revenue, or people getting money to put into the economy of the city that is facing the problems that we have. So the details. Please pay attention to the details, and please explain to the public that what this empowerment zone will do will increase employment by increasing the number of positions that a company will have to have in order to reap the benefits that they get from the zone. Happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you. You as well, Mr. Sacks. John Walsh, your next speaker?
John Walsh, Googling at Walsh Confidential. And check out our... We'll be doing a Facebook on Eric later this... Today. And no reflection on the city clerk, no negative reflection asking for receipt. It's what happens after the city clerk. We're 100% in favor of local empowerment zones and have a tolerable winter solstice.
Thank you. That will be the final public comment for the year. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for taking us out of 2011. Final applause. Wish you a happy holidays and a good new year. And with that, we'll close our public comment on this item. And with that, let's go ahead and take a vote. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, colleagues. That is the last item that was in the special. Let's go to the regular meeting. We'll adjourn the second special, and we'll go to the regular meeting. And with that, it is next order of business.
Council has motions for post and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
You guys, this is my last time to give you excuses. If you want excuses, you can put a whole bunch of them in. I'm really amenable to them. Mr. Weston said he's cool with everybody not being here all the time, so... All right, announcements. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, I just want to say, I think it's a historic moment as we get into the holiday season, that when Barack Obama became president, he said he'd get out of Iraq. And officially, it was announced yesterday, we are getting out of Iraq. And I just want to say, there'll be peace, at least from our end in the Mideast, and we should remember that we're out of Iraq. The war there, that started March 19, 2003, and our involvement... And I'm not going to get into the politics about right or wrong. The point is, we should just acknowledge the fact that 5,000 Americans, young Americans, were killed, and tens of thousands are going to be dealing with post-traumatic stress syndrome. But we are pulling out. We only have a couple of hundred there now, and they'll be out by the end of the month. So I just want to thank everybody that put their lives on the line, and I'm glad we're out. Thank you.
Other announcements. Mr. La Bange.
Mr. Rosendahl, thank you for remembering those who paid the ultimate price, and those who lived with the price that they paid. Many people came back without arms and legs, and the stories of all Americans that way. I want to just thank each and every one of you, wish you a great holiday. I want to thank Avak and all the CLA staff, and Jerry Miller personally. I want to thank Ed and the Sound Man, and whoever's behind the cameras up there, and our city clerks, and everybody, and my colleagues. We're very fortunate to have an opportunity to be called, to be on this team of the council, to be able to fight for our districts, and fight for the city of Los Angeles, to make people believe. So I wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and all other holidays, and a safe new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Weezer?
President, and I want to wish everyone happy holidays, and that we see increased peace in the next coming year. Thankful that some of our men and women in the armed forces are coming home. And let's remember that just south of the border, we need to increase peace there as well. There's been too many deaths this past two years, over 40,000 people are dying because of the drug wars in Mexico. Let's hope that that resolves itself soon. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Zion?
Mr. President, and I want to acknowledge you as our outgoing president once again, and the great leadership you've given us. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, and let the folks know while the council won't be in session for the next couple of weeks, our staffs will be working, the city will still be operating. So while we don't have meetings here, many of us will be attending to activities in our districts. So again, wishing everyone a great, great holiday season, and thank you. And a new year will be bright, and hopefully, our economy will be brighter, and great items ahead for us in Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before I recognize Mr. Reyes, let me again single you out and thank you. I know that as we come back to the next meeting, we'll have new Assistant President Pro Tem, but I want to thank you for all the meetings you were able to not only oversee here, but the leadership that you brought in your time as Assistant President Pro Tem. It was an honor to serve with you. Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
I just want to say, thank you to all for all your support. Happy holidays to all my colleagues, and Councilman Garcia as well, for his leadership. I also want to thank the Fire Department and the Police Department, and all the city families who have volunteered, donated their time, gifts for the folks out in the community. There's a great spirit out there when we are generous and when we share. And again, I want to thank you for that, because there are many families that are going to have a gift and/or a meal on these special days, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Other holiday announcements? If not, can I ask everybody, please rise for our adjourning motions. Colleagues, just real quick, if I can ask, we are still... I know the mayor is giving some words right now about this, but I would ask that we all adjourn in memory of John Adaberry, the 40-year-old who was killed in Hollywood when a man went on a shooting rampage. And he's driving by in his car, he was shot in the face and succumbed to his injuries. He was somebody who, as a man of faith, was a music industry executive, including a stint as A&R for Taboo Records and Vice President of Death Row Records. He also helped create the music publishing company Infusion Music Group, where he worked on albums for Christina Aguilera, Michael Jackson, and the Spice Girls. And his sister described her loss about her brother, John. She said, "I lost my John, my baby, my guardian angel, my protector, my little brother at 3:00 PM. I do not understand now, nor will I ever, why such a senseless act of violence was inflicted on such a God-fearing, kind, compassionate, loving individual." We remember a man of peace, a man who contributed to the city, and a man who was senselessly taken from us. And I ask that we all adjourn today in memory of Mr. Adaberry. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also ask that we adjourn today in honor of David Lawrence Spencer. David Spencer was born on April 24, 1968, in Queens, New York, and came to Los Angeles with his family in 1975, when he was seven years old. He grew up in Los Angeles, loved the city, and felt like a native. He and his wife and best friend, April Lundstrom, made their home in Eagle Rock, neighborhood of Council District 14. David graduated from UCLA School of Theater, Film, and Television with honors in 1993, and enjoyed a successful creative career in the film and TV industry. He managed major network television sitcom writing departments for nearly a decade, earning credits on countless popular shows, including That 70 Show, The Big Bang Theory, Just Shoot Me, The Larry Sanders Show, and many others. In recent years, he worked as a web producer at ABC.com and videographer for the Ministry of Unknown Signs sketch comedy show, which, because he was collaborating with creative fans, felt more like fun than work. He was a very loving, kind, vibrant person with an abundant and creative life, which he and April filled with friends and family. David was known for his quirky sense of humor, and as someone with a great sense for life, with the ability to find silliness in the oddities of people and circumstances. He had a way of sending people at ease and making them laugh at him or even at themselves. David was an avid music fan. He also enjoyed mid-century modern design, comedy, and a good political debate. He loved living in Eagle Rock and being a part of the young professional community there. He was one of the creators of Eagle Rock Talk, a web-based local radio forum, which facilitated many lively and memorable conversations about community issues and interests. Among the long list of career and personal achievements, David took special pride in having become a grilled cheese champion in the annual Los Angeles Grilled Cheese Invitational. And he was an early adopter of technology, web-based communications, and was active on social networks. In fact, during the last days of David's life, he and April used social networks to keep their friends and family informed, and allow people to post memories and tributes to David, so that he could enjoy them, immersing himself in the love and joy those in his life wanted to share with him, even as he said goodbye. David was diagnosed with cancer less than a year ago and passed away on December 14 at the far-too-young age of 43 years old. He is survived by his wife, April, as well as his mother, Cookie Spencer, his brother, Dan Spencer, and a large circle of loving friends, family, and associates. A memorial will be held this Sunday, December 18, at 2:00 PM in Los Angeles Center Studios in downtown Los Angeles. We will certainly miss him. Eagle Rock community will miss him, and my staffer, Jessica Wiltite-McLean, a good friend of the family, will also certainly miss him. Great individual that added a lot to life the short time he was here.
Thank you. Other adjourning motions? Mr. La Bange.
We adjourn in memory of Van Carlson. He's the husband of my deputy, Mary Rodriguez. Very passionate guy. They were a loving couple, married for over 30 years, two beautiful children. He was taken too early in life, and he just passed on Wednesday night. I ask we adjourn in memory of Van Carlson, a great resident of this city, a loving man who was a great father, a great husband, and a good friend.
Thank you. And finally, one other adjourning motion. Christopher Hitchens, the celebrated author, engaging, enraging, I think is how the LA Times described him, but somebody who also spent quite a number of visits to Los Angeles. Most recently, he and I were on a stage together at UCLA for the annual Daniel Pearl Memorial Lecture with the Pearl family, in which he gave an incredible speech.